Evening. Welcome to the June 26th meeting of the Allamance Burlington Board of Education. Welcome. Tonight, I have a couple things. First, the board meeting, this board meeting can be seen on Spectrum channels five and 10, every Wednesday at 7:00 PM and every Saturday at 10:00 AM. And that's great. And secondly, we have two county commissioners with us, Amy Gailey and Bob Byrd. Welcome. And at this time, I'm going to ask that we all pause for a moment of silence. And after the moment of silence, Mr. Mark Payne will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Board members, we have a published agenda, which should be before you. Do I hear a motion that we accept the agenda or any changes that need to be made?
I'll make that motion, Steve.
Okay. You're a second?
I'm a second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. A thank you. Next is approval of the minutes that are also published and online. Do I hear a motion that we approve the...
Did I ask for a correction? Did we get that in there?
Surely.
It was a spelling.
Dr. Lambert's name was just misspelled in the minutes.
Beth. I move we approve it with the change recommended?
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The next is the approval of consent items. There are three items on the consent agenda this evening, the precollegiate participation in athletics, the file wave contract, and the rental agreement. That's the rental agreement for the church that meets at Hoff Hills Middle.
Can we pull the file wave off, just discuss it?
I have no problem with that. Any objection to that? Okay, we'll prove... Where would we put it? That's a... Is that operations?
Superintendent Finance.
Superintendent Finance, okay. The other two items, are we okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion that we approve precollegiate and the rental agreement?
I'll make... Go ahead.
I'm a second.
A motion, second. All in favor, see, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Let me write this out. File wave. Next is public comments. I have two requests for public comments, one from Sandy Ellington Graves and Erica Johnson. Ladies, I'm not going to read my whole little spiel tonight, but you'll have three minutes. And there is a timer that our tech folks are going to get up here. And you'll have three minutes. And you'll also be able to see it on the, at the podium where you stand. So Ms. Ellington Graves, would you be kind enough to start for us?
Sure.
If you'll just state your name and you'll have three minutes.
We have a little timer, okay. Sandy Ellington Graves. I'm here on behalf of my builder partners with Lacey Ridge Subdivision. It's our understanding that that subdivision is being discussed this evening for rezoning based on the impact that it may potentially have on Southern Allamance High School. It's important to note that it is a 10-lot subdivision. Of the three families that we are currently negotiating with, they're already in the Southern School District, in the Southern Middle and Southern High Districts. So they're just moving within the district. The other two parties that we're negotiating with are baby boomers and they're already empty nesters. So we feel like that our impact in that particular subdivision is minimal or nonexistent to the overcrowding issues that are currently in place at Southern. Just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that before those decisions were made. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Erica Johnson, welcome.
Good evening. I am Erica Johnson, an educator of nine years, currently at Grove Park Elementary. I am here tonight on behalf of Allamance Burlington Association of Educators as co-president. When asked to fulfill this position, I wasn't one concerned with the title. I'm not one that cares for titles. I'll do the work, and within my work, you'll see the title. As bell hooks, an American author, feminist, and social activist, she has her name printed in all lowercase letters because she wants her readers to pay attention to the lesson, the message, and that she's trying to get across rather than her name. As in David Brooks' books, "A Road of Character," my eulogy virtues precede over my resume virtues. What will my students, coworkers, community, and family members say about me when I'm gone? Ms. Ariel Hogarth is amazing and left her mark here in the Allamance Burlington school system. It has been an honor to work with her, and so many of you spoke highly of her here at the last school board meeting. I will continue to encourage others to be in the know as she did. My mission is to get into our communities to help encourage others to be in the know as well, to work hand in hand, stand together, present a united front for public education. It takes a village. I'd like to thank the board and all those that put in countless hours on our strategic plan. We showed up in great numbers, spoke in favor of the plan. However, our county commissioners can't see our vision nor share the same passion that we do for our students and public education. My response to that is that I will continue to rise every morning and personally invest in each and every one of our students, exhaust all my resources, because every student deserves an equitable education. I want to be and will be worthy of my students. Please hold me accountable, and I plan to do the same of you. Let's celebrate our successes that we had in the 2016 and 17 school year, as well as set new goals for our upcoming 17, 18 school year. I look forward to being a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll have board superintendent comments, and I'll start, and then we'll go to Patsy, Mark, Pam, Tony, Allison, and then Dr. Harrison. Board members, I know we've had some... I've had individual discussions with you about work session time and in an attempt to be inclusive and try to make this work for everybody. I've talked to all of you, and I think we've landed that we can do this on a second Tuesday at 12:30 and make this work. This is a change from the second Monday at 12:30. And I appreciate, board members, your frankness in telling me what's going on with you and sharing your concerns about conflicts that we have in our personal lives and things that we're trying to do for the school system and the community and helping out. So I thank you for discussing that with me, and we will try this for a while. And hopefully, this will be good. And of course, that will start, I believe, on August 8th is the first date. That kind of changed that, because I think the other one would have been August the 14th. So it'll make it a little earlier, but most of the time, it's going to make it a week, one day later. That was the first thing. The second thing is that I was just thrilled to be a part of every graduation at our six mainline high schools this year, being there, shaking hands of all the young men and women that walked across the stage. And you could see the enthusiasm in their eyes, or maybe it was joy. But nevertheless, they were excited about the fact that they're moving on to the next step in their lives. I also spent a little bit of time late this morning at one of our summer schools, the one at Cummings High School, and talked with a student that I happen to know that I'm very concerned about. And according to this teacher, if he's there the next three days, he's going to make it. And we're going to have a special graduation for those seniors that didn't make their mainline graduations here in this room on August the 8th at 6:00 PM. So that's a very special affair. And I hope all the board members can make that, if at all possible. And that's all I have. Patsy?
I only have one, and that is I received double contact in reference to the unfortunate situation that happened at Eastern High School before the school out, in reference to LGBT community. And one of the issues that they brought up to me was they felt that our policy did not address that in terms of bullying. But I have subsequently researched our policies. I did send that information to correct them, that it does in fact include that community. And this is just from me personally, that I do want to apologize to anyone who was offended and anyone in regards to the manner in which it was handled. You know, as a member of the Board of Education, we are here for all 22,000 of our students, no matter what their sexual preference or orientation is. And when deciding policies for the board, we do what's best for all children and not based upon gender selection preference or whatever it may be. I too also attended graduations and was very pleased with administrators and everyone. I think we did an excellent job. And just looking forward to the summer. And today's my birthday.
I'll save my comments for August. I can bank them up, right?
[laughing]
I tired all day today. I left everything on the bathroom floor. I just have nothing left, so.
Okay, we'll give you a pass. Pam?
Just to add on with graduations, it's one of my most favorite parts of being on the board. It's just, it's amazing to sit up there and just look at the audience. And I think it's the coolest thing when that first mother says, "Yeah!" I mean, because you know, we don't know what young people have gone through and families have gone through to get to that point. I don't ever want to restrict that. I just think it's amazing to see happiness and accomplishment in the faces of kids and parents. And I just like to say that Western High School has the biggest boys I've ever seen in my life. They were just like Goliaths, just huge and just so nice. And I think Allison and I only got one shoulder dislocation. It might have been at Southern. I can shake some hands. But it is a great thing to be part of that. And Dr. Farrell and I have been to every graduation. We're almost cousins now. And so it was a blessing. It's great to have the administrators there and Dr. Harrison, just everybody. Every school has a different personality, and their graduations are different. And Emmett Alexander says, "Okay, we're in church. We grew up. We all know how to act in church." It was priceless. So I'm just very thankful to be able to be part of that. It's a great thing to watch kids go through that all their life and walk across that stage. That is a huge deal, and it always needs to be honored.
Thanks. Tony?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I had a chance today to stop in at the Honors Institute at Elon and see the young folks there engaged with what they were doing. So just wanted to say that I was glad that was working well and appreciate the teachers that are in Kent that's working to make that a success. And I understand some commissioners were going today too. So appreciate you guys checking that out. And I would let the board members know if you have a chance. I'm not sure how long it goes on. I know it's this week and next week. But if you have a chance to stop in, I know Dr. Bullock would love for you to stop by and see it.
I just want to say, too, that graduation was a great opportunity. So thanks to the administration who helped guide that, as well as our principals who led those events. They were great. And I just wanted to mention that the A.L.A. summer program kicked off back in the first part of June. So we have a new class of close to 90 students, I believe, that are entering our A.L.A. program. So they had a good three and a half days at Elon. So we appreciate Elon's support in that endeavor.
Dr. Harrison, and you're going to give us some...
I'm just going to do a brief little legislative update, and then I'm going to ask Ms. Dennison to talk a little bit about how the budget is playing out. There was an overall 3.5% increase in the education budget this year. Still leaves us a couple hundred dollars per child behind the pre-recession per pupil expenditure. Principal pay, average increase of 8.6%. Does consider the side of school, but does not consider the degree the principal holds or longevity in the job. We'll have hold harmless provisions, so no one will go backwards next year. And there'll be up to $15,000 bonuses to be paid by the 31st of October. Assistant principal salary increase of 13.4% average. It's basically the monthly salary paid on a licensed teacher plus 17%. Teacher pay, 3.3% increase, 17, 18, 9.6% over the biennium. Range runs from 0.6% to 6.7%. $385 bonus for teachers with 25 years experience. My editorial is, that's a slap. Extends bonus program to math in four through eight and reading grades four and five. Central office personnel gets a bonus of $1,000. Bus drivers, there's $16 million, .9 million in the budget. DPI is supposed to study the salary schedule, and I think Shannon's going to have a little more on that, maybe. Three bonus leave days eliminates retirement health benefits for those who are hired after January 1st, 2021. Central office was cut 7.4% this year, 11.6% in 1819. They eliminate flexibility in AIG, IDEA, LEAP, and in textbooks. They've reinstated a kind of teaching fellows program, but for special ed and for STEM, it'll be an $8,500 a year scholarship, I believe, that will not have many of the support structures that the teaching fellows have. The school grades stay the same, 80% proficiency, 20% on growth, with a 15-point grading scale for the A through F. School construction, $30 million in 1718, additional $75 million in 1819 for needs based, for school system with high needs for capital expenditures. But when we look at 115 school systems, that's not a whole lot of money. They did find money for a voucher expansion increase, $10 million a year for 10 years. It's presently at $34.8 million. They're putting together a joint task force on education finance reform, $2.5 million, $2.4 million for digital learning, funding for sixth and seventh grade CTE, cooperative innovative high schools. It's a reduction from 300 and some thousand dollars per to 200,000 for each. But we have not been included in that in the past, and we are included this year. So we'll have $200,000 for our early college. K3 class size reduction does not apply to dual immersion programs, which that was a concern of ours. Driver ed stays the same, permitting a local optional sales tax for facilities from a quarter percent to a half a percent, and also a $1.9 billion bond for capital in November 2018. Did a little bit on school construction flexibility as far as entering leases. And Senate Bill 117 dealt with pension spiking. That's around the lawsuit that was in Johnston County and a couple of other counties. And they ruled that the employment, retirement system overstepped its bounds without following rulemaking. Senate Bill 467 eliminates the teacher or state employees retirement system for personnel hired beginning July 1st, 2018. New hires will be able to join the North Carolina 401K plan or the North Carolina 457 plan. Shannon, do you want to give a little bit more of what that means for us?
So I'm just going to highlight a few of those items. As this budget is just kind of coming out, we're still getting more information about many of the items. But as Dr. Harrison mentioned, the cooperative innovative high schools, that's allotting $200,000. That'll be a $200,000 increase for us. We haven't seen funding for, before. So we will be able to use that to pay for some of the expenses over at the early college. We had predicted that, in the Senate bill, that AIG and ESL funding, among the others, were going to be limited in flexibility. They are permitting that AIG flexibility does not stop. We don't lose that flexibility until July 1st, 2018. So we have one more year that we have flexibility in AIG funding. With that flexibility, it's about $366,000 that we're able to recoup this year from what we initially thought that we were going to lose. That's going to be one year, but it's at least $366,000 that we have for this year, if nothing changes for next year with the AIG. ESL is, we do lose flexibility on that this year. So that is about half of what we requested in the increase for inflation to the county commissioners. We, there is a little bit more flexibility in the third grade reading and then the new fourth through eighth grade math and reading bonuses. This past year, a third grade teacher, in order to receive the bonus, they had to remain teaching in the third grade. Next year, and then they're going retroactive back to last year, third grade teachers or now the fourth through eighth grade teachers do not still need to be teaching in the same grade. And they do not have to remain at the same school. They just have to remain within the same LEA. So hopefully, that's a little bit of a retention for us, for some of those teachers. With the money that they're going to, so the classified employees receiving the $1,000 raises, that is based upon 12 months of employment. So it will not further skew our salary scales. It breaks out to $83.33 a month. So if you're a 10-month employee, it would be $833. That does work out. While it's less money, it's the same amount every month. So two people doing the same job, it don't get further off in pay just because they work a different number of months.
Excuse me, I had to... Do you want us to wait till the end or just... That classified, is that just central office only? That's any classified employee?
Yes. That's any classified employee except bus drivers. They're doing something different for bus drivers. In the past, when they've allocated the raises or bonuses such as that, it's been for full-time employees. So it hasn't always been able to capture bus drivers. So what they're doing for bus drivers is they're allotting a specific dollar amount that's going to go out to the schools to be able to establish the salary scales that we have, to be able to add increases to our salary skills. The challenge with that is at this time, we don't know how much we're going to receive to be able to know what that's going to mean for our bus drivers, because DPI has to create how that money is going to be allocated. Basically, they said that they were going to allocate, I believe it was $16 million for the raises. However, they did not say how to allocate that out to the LEAs. So with that, we will be able to provide the bus driver raises.
Do we decide whether that's going to be paid on a monthly basis, this bonus, or whether it's going to be lump sum or twice a year? How is that going to be?
So the classified is not going to be a bonus. It'll be a permanent raise.
This is, that's a permanent raise?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The $15,000 bonuses that you mentioned, that is for the teachers in the third grade reading?
So no, there's, there is bonuses up to $15,000, and those are for principals. They have to meet certain metrics to be able to be eligible for the bonuses. Some of them have to do with what level their school was at last year and what they were able to bring it to this year.
I sent a PowerPoint to you this morning. I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at it, but has that on there.
The bonuses, there are bonuses for third grade reading as well as fourth through sixth grade. Some of the grades, reading, some of the grades, math and reading. And so those are, those are bonuses, but it's not quite $15,000. They put a cap on those bonuses. I believe it's around $3,500.
Okay. And when you talked about the flexibility in AIG and IDEA and ESL, you referring mainly to, are you referring to the flexibility to pay the lower income salaries? Or are you talking, okay, that's what you're talking about, okay. Did it state how much we got in textbook, how much will we be receiving in textbook allocation? Is it an increase?
It's a slight increase. It appears to be a larger increase. But last year, they had non-recurring funds in the textbook digital resource. So it was set to be cut. They reinstated it, plus I believe there's a small increase in textbook digital resource. But I don't have what that means for us yet.
And when you talk about flexibility with textbooks, what flexibility have we had? Using, I mean, buying computers or Chromebooks or whatever?
We haven't used that flexibility in the same way we have with AIG and LEAP. We are still going to be able to use it. From my understanding and what they've stated, we will still be able to use it to be able to purchase all digital resources and textbooks going forward.
We will be able to use it for digital.
We just can't transfer it out to pay for salaries, which we haven't been doing. So that's not...
And so that is a LEA's discretion as to whether it would actually be textbooks or digital?
Shannon, before you move, can you just give me an idea, when you're talking about the $200,000 for the early college, what is that going to involve? I mean, we probably pulled that before from somewhere else. But now that we'll have that specifically for that, what does that open up?
So that might open up an additional position for the early college, as well as helping cover some of the expenses that we have been pulling. So this is something that we're just finding out about. So we're still trying to figure out exactly what that means. Obviously, we have well more than $200,000 in expenses over at the early college. So likely, it will go to help cover some of those expenses, which could open up opportunities to continue to further.
But that wouldn't open up an additional students?
Will it help get the one at Graham off the ground?
No, this is just for the board at ACC.
ACC.
But we'll have some state money to go to Graham that will free up some local money, Patsy, so we could use it.
Yeah.
So that's good.
What was your question, Pam?
Students. Students?
Students is a space issue.
I have one other. You talked about the school construction at the conference I attended last week. It was my understanding that, how much, $34 million or whatever that amount is, that is only for tier one schools? Because as soon as I heard it, I was texting Dr. Harrison. And we are not a tier one school, so we can't, is my understanding...
I think there's, there are a couple of things. There's tier one schools, it's flat-out money. Other schools, it's a limited cap with a dollar-to-dollar match.
Right. We're a tier two, we're a tier two school. So it is going to be an application process. I haven't seen what that is going to necessarily look at, look like. But from what I have seen, it'd be a $1 match. For every dollar that they put in, we would have to put in a dollar. And then it would be an application to apply. And I believe it was up to $10 million that we would be eligible to apply for, given the whole state's needs. It's not to say that we would receive necessarily $10 million or any of that funding. But if we were to receive it, it would be a $1 to $1 match.
Okay. And when you say that, Matt, would it be possible then for, say, for the lottery funds coming up this year? We can, no, can't use that.
Local dollars.
It's got to be local dollars from the county?
Shannon, could you elaborate on the, where we fail with the local money requirements for where the state fell as far as the inflationary? You know, there were predictions about how much of that we would have to use for required increases. And I'm just wondering where that actually landed.
Okay. So I don't have it exactly figured out, since we're in the middle of closing out. But I have some brief ideas of where we were and what it is looking like now. I will say with AIG, LEAP funding, that we were... I will say with AIG, LEP funding, that we were, let's see, we were thinking that that was going to require 691,000. Of that 366,000, we now have an additional year of flexibility. So that adds 366,000 back in. We had predicted, health insurance stayed the same. Retirement rate actually increased from what the Senate budget had. So, and I don't have up here what I had initially projected it at, but that was a fairly large increase on, with the state retirement. The 10 teachers required for House Bill 13 stayed the same. The teacher raises, we had predicted per the Senate budget, 3.7%. It was 3.3%, so it's slightly lower. And it is looking like growth in charter school based upon our final numbers this year is higher than what we had initially projected. I don't have a final number as to what that's really going to look like, but that's something I can work on.
Could you send that to us when you get done?
Mm-hmm.
And the other question I had is, back to the $1,000 raise for classified. I didn't understand why you were on the 10-month employees. I mean, I understand why you did it. You divided it by 10, and it came with 83, and multiply that 10. But that means they only get $830 raise. Does the Senate budget say everybody gets $1,000?
No, they actually say that based upon 12 months of employment, you get $1,000. So how that breaks out is a 12-month employee would get $1,000, a 10-month employee would get 833. It's the same per month.
So it's the state that's mandating that?
It is. And unfortunately, a few years back, it was the opposite. So now we have some employees who work the same job. The 12-month employee actually gets paid less than the 10-month employee because of that same problem. So it actually works to help stabilize our salary skills, even though unfortunately, the 10-month don't get quite as much on an annual basis.
Shannon, and I apologize because I forgot to mention this during board comment, but you made reference to the voucher system, I think. How much is it? 9,300, 9,800? It's something crazy. And I just had to say that, you know, out of the budget, I think that was the most disturbing thing that I saw, to see where they've increased. You basically would get a debit card, the families who apply for this, and it can apply for up to, don't quote me, I think it's 9,300 or 9,800 to be used. It's just taking money away from public education. And that's in addition to that educate, that other scholarship that you have to apply for in March.
Yeah, I think the, I think the opportunity scholarship is $4,500. Shannon, is that?
That's the one you're applying for, like in March? For special needs students? No?
No, let us, let us get some information, get that out to you tomorrow.
Right. But anyway, I want to make that statement. It's a huge amount out of the state budget that basically is another attempt to decipher or take away funds from, from the public school system. And I don't like that at all.
How many millions did you say that was? 16?
A lot.
That they just miraculously found?
$10 million, $10 million a year for 10 years. It's presently at $34.8 million.
That's the opportunity scholarship.
That's the opportunity scholarship.
Yeah, because there's three different types. There's opportunity scholarships, there's the voucher, and then there's the savings account, which has that little credit card concept. So it's not good for public education.
The savings account, I think the savings account is limited to, what is it, EC students?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Anything else from Ms. Dennison?
What was, what, for teachers with 25 years of experience or more, what was the bonus?
300, let me pull it back up.
$385.
Yes.
$385 a month?
We wish.
I hope they don't spend all of it.
I used to be one of those, and I just, you know, I worry about, I mean, golly, I mean, I'm, anything's better than nothing, but doggone.
I don't think she was finished, Eve. I just, it was so much that I couldn't wait to the end for all the questions.
You're good. Honestly, that was, that was the bulk of it. I was going through bus drivers, and then we had kind of touched on the other topics. Unless you guys have other questions or anything else that you've heard.
My only question is this, I think it was the House Bill 12 or 13 that was dealing with the lack, class size that, and they pushed it back a year or forward a year. And there's nothing in this present budget that addresses this, and this is a biennial budget. Now, what I heard is that it's going to be addressed in technical corrections when, when they do that, I guess this week. Has anybody else heard that?
From what I had heard, that they had in each of the budgets, that they had a commitment to fund it for next year, but that they weren't necessarily coming out with a specific dollar amount because they were evaluating how and what teachers that we have. They're separating our allotments out this year and going into further detail and further reporting on, especially for K-3 classes and the specialized teachers that we have. So I have not heard anything that we're anticipating an actual dollar amount before they dismiss this year, but that could have changed.
Dr. Harrison, I just ask, Tony, do the charter schools have the A through F grading thing like we do?
I think so.
Okay.
Anything else from Ms. Dennison? Okay, and you're going to be backed up in, after Dr. Monroe.
Yes.
So thank you. Dr. Monroe?
Is that all you have?
May I ask a question while he's walking to the podium? How did we lose the battle against the proficiency versus growth? I, it went over my head, I guess. I thought we were on track to get some relief there. Do you, do you have any guidance?
I don't, I don't know how serious the conversation ever been.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Van Pelt, Board members, and Dr. Harrison. Our first gift will be presented by Mrs. Scott Schofer, Alaman's Tennis Junior Association. Come on up.
My name is Scott Schofer. I'm with Alaman's Junior Tennis Foundation. I'd like to acknowledge a couple of board members. We have Stacy Higgins, who's our treasurer. We have Sylvia Gamm, who's our secretary. And we have Hope Tally, who is with the North Carolina Tennis Association, also a board member. Back in February, we gave a presentation to the school board, and you all unanimously voted to reconstruct the high school courts at Western Alaman's and then a resurfacing of Southern Alaman's and Eastern Alaman's. And through our fundraising efforts, we want to, first of all, thank you for your dedication and also your approval of the courts project, and also Dr. Harrison for your time and commitment to that as well. And in the back, George Robinson, we couldn't do this without you. You have been in this since the beginning. We've contacted through George and also Jimmy as well. He is kind of our contact between our Junior Tennis Foundation and also the athletic directors. We're working on a couple of different projects with George and Jimmy. And at this time, we'd like to present a check for $30,000 to the Alaman's Burlington School System that goes toward the high school courts project.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schofer. Appreciate that. I have three remaining gifts that are left, and they are as follows. We've received a donation amount of $1,000 from Alaman's Chamber of Burlington. The funds will be used for the shared resources for morale and community building. Second gift, I would like to receive the gift in an amount of $1,000 from Mr. Brad Bradford of Burlington. The funds will be used for the playground. And the last gift, Graham Middle received a donation amount of $15,000 from Glenn Raven Incorporated. The funds will be used for staff to assist to aid and support of teachers and assist with the vision for Blending Glory for the upcoming school year. As it stands now, the total amount that we see for this school year is $311,663.40.
Before we make the motion, can we get a picture of the Tennis Association? I think that's a tremendous kid. Is it okay?
Yes.
Sure.
Go have your picture taken.
Take a picture for me. Will you do that, Chris? We can, thank you, I appreciate it.
Did a big plastic check.
Jenny?
Yes.
I see Jenny over there now. She was just sitting there, I didn't see her.
She's shaking it up for the summer.
Thank you.
Well played. Good idea, thank you. Board members, we have four gifts. Do I hear a motion to accept these gifts?
Some of them.
Have a motion second? All in favor, let be known by saying aye. Aye. And thank you, I know that you will see that these people are properly thanked, you always do, and generally go, I guess you can go beyond the call with thanking folks. I don't know, but I'm just, just very pleased. $311,600 and some dollars, that's great.
And Steve, if I could too, also to Glenn Raven for this $15,000, to Graham Middle School. I mean, you know, I've always said, boy, I don't hear that name called that often in terms of donations. So I am extremely pleased with the efforts of, to Glenn Raven meals and recognize that Graham Middle School needs that support. So I'd like to just extend a special thanks to them for that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dennison, you're backed up with the budget amendment and interim budget.
Chairman, board members, Dr. Harrison, I have before you this evening a final budget amendment to close out our '16-'17 school year. This will capture everything through the end of the school year. If any of you guys have any questions?
Do you know yet how much we have left in the fund balance after this fiscal year ends?
This fiscal year, I don't anticipate, I anticipate us coming very close to spending what we received this year. So I anticipate it being very similar, and I don't have the exact dollar amount in front of me, but I...
We didn't use it, but we didn't add to it?
Correct.
Okay, we need to vote on this, I believe, to accept this. Do I hear a motion that we accept the budget amendment?
Some move.
Second.
Do you have a motion second? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye. Aye opposed. Okay, next item.
I have now the interim budget resolution. Since we don't have a final budget from the state, we aren't able to completely finalize everything in our budget. So we do require to have an interim budget resolution, which allows us to continue spending beyond July 1st. If we did not have this, we would not be able to spend any money beyond July 1st until we passed a final budget.
We've done this in the past.
Yes, yes. When, how soon in the next fiscal year do we start getting disbursements from the state and county and federal?
We get them right away. We get the county's funding right around the 15th of every month. From the state, we get it as soon as we order it, we're able to have access to it immediately. So we will continue writing checks. Assuming this is approved, we will continue writing checks next week.
Okay.
We're going to do another budget amendment once we get the...
Yeah, we'll do the final budget resolution once, yeah, once we know our exact state funding. Because while there's a lot of projections out there, we don't know exactly what our allotments are going to be for everything.
Yeah, I didn't know how soon we, we started getting allotments and, because that, that way, we would be looking at the fund balance a lot closer because that would be our cash flow.
Right. No, we don't, we don't have to worry about that. We are able to access funds, even if the state, for any reason, doesn't pass, finalize and pass this budget, that if the governor, for some reason, does not sign the budget, we are able to continue getting access to money from the state.
Shannon, could I request that whenever you reconcile what we were talking about before with regard to where we fail with the usage of our local funds for required expenses based on the state budget, when you send that to us, could you also send that to the commissioners?
Sure.
Just in the name of transparency, I want to make sure they have the numbers and they know what we're talking about and working with as we work through this. Also, you send us a monthly, or we used to get a monthly sheet.
Yep.
I'm not talking about all the expenses sheet, I'm just talking about the one page that shows, looks like an audit page.
Similar to this, less columns.
Yes. That used to go to the county manager and be shared with the commissioners too. And at the hearing with the commissioners, I'm not sure who I spoke with, but somebody made a comment about them not seeing those numbers or not knowing where our numbers were. And so as long as other board members agree, and Dr. Harrison, I think it would be good to have those numbers go into them periodically so that they know, as we do throughout the month, how we're using those funds.
That's a good point, Tony, and I think it's good for us to be as transparent as we can.
I'm happy to do that. I didn't realize that it had gone to them too, so that might have been a lost in translation when I take it over.
And that's, that's how I realized it. We've, they've had turnover and we've had turnover, and so, yeah, we have nothing to hide. And so I think that's good information, and I always enjoy looking at it and seeing where we stand on a month-to-month basis and where we think we may land. So I think they may find that information useful.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do I hear, do I hear a motion that we adopt the interim budget resolution for '17-'18?
Some of it.
Second.
Do you have a motion second? All in favor, let be known by saying aye. Aye opposed. Okay.
Shannon, I think this is what Steve, I mean, what Tony was asking for with what we asked the county commissioners for, plus with all the changes that's now coming in from the state, I guess, where, where, where will we land? You know, what adjustments is any? Do we anticipate having to make in what area to get the school year started? Is that what he's basically asking for?
What I'm asking for is that through the budget process, there was some controversy when we use the word inflation. We use that beyond its typical meaning to mean that the state mandates require us to spend money at a, at a level that we don't have discretion over. And so there was some discussion about if the Senate budget or if the House budget, then how that affects us. And so I thought that once we know what is is, it would be good to share that and say, so they will know moving forward that we did end up having to spend this much money based on what the state did.
Okay. And once you get there, can you go a little bit further then and say, of those items that we requested, how are we going to proceed now? Or do we make any adjustments? Or do we just not do those items? Or are we going to move money? Can we move money from somewhere to do the specialized program? Or are we just going to hold off the next year and implement it? Something like that.
Yes, we will work on that when we get our total budget together. That will be part of our total, total budget presentation for sure, exactly what we're looking at doing with, with the funding, what we're going to be able to do, what we're not going to be able to do.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Dr. Harrison, I believe you're going to talk to us about middle school track and cross country.
I think we'd like Mr. Robinson to talk to us a little bit about it.
Okay. Hate to say, but it's Eddie. Okay, welcome, Mr. Robinson.
Chairman Van Pelt, Dr. Harrison, members of the board, and Ms. Simpson, happy birthday. Today's a special day for me too, and I got to be quick. It's my wedding anniversary, so if I want another 18 more, I need to go quick. So, but we just wanted to provide a quick update. Middle school track went off very well. I'm sure you guys have heard as well as I. It was very successful. Kids were extremely excited. The advisors that actually coached the kids really enjoyed it, and, and I probably shouldn't say this, but they probably would have did it for nothing. But we do appreciate you finding it in your heart and your pocketbook to compensate them. So it was very successful, and we are really excited about building upon the momentum that we had in the spring. With that being said, in terms of cross country, we heard from principals, parents, student athletes about the need to make that an official offering. Basically, our middle schools are already doing running clubs in the fall, which was kind of serving as a, as an activity not officially offered through the district. And so what we're asking you guys to do is make that an official offering. And, and obviously, we've talked about some scheduling issues, and I think we have that worked out. We're not going to, initially, we're not going to do like a 15-event type of schedule. We're going to do it like very miniscule to start out, kind of work out some of the rough edges. But I'm really excited about the direction we're going with that as well, with your approval.
George, were you able to get t-shirts or...
George, were you able to get t-shirts or some kind of uniform?
Some of our schools are very resourceful. I know that not all did, but they, there were about two or three schools that bought like a, I'll just use turn time as an example, had like a gray short and like a five, six dollar t-shirt that was screen printed. So it wasn't what you would see in the Olympics, but they had a way to be identified by school, and the kids were really excited about that. I mean, obviously, being an old athlete, anytime we could get a t-shirt with the school's name on it, we got extremely excited, as well as our parents as well. It would be easier for me to ask mom for a six dollar turn time t-shirt, as opposed to going to the outlets and asking for a sixty dollar shirt. So with that being said, did all of them have it? No, but there were some that were able to accomplish that.
Is that, I know it's money, but is that a possibility that we would ever have some kind of funding for that type of situation? Because if it's gonna be a legitimate sport, like what it is, that makes a big difference for a kid that has a school, something on them that they're running or whatever for their school. I didn't know if, you know, you could find money-
We do, at the beginning of the year, we do allot them a certain amount of funding where they can purchase those items if they need it. But also, they have talked about charging, and that we're not going to charge like fifteen dollars to go to a middle school track meet, but in keeping with what we're already doing, we're going to do that as well. So we'll be able to use some of that funding to be able to provide some of those things that they don't have.
So George, just for clarification, what we're approving tonight is the middle school track and also the cross country?
We had this on for a discussion, then we'll bring it back to you after hearing from you next month.
Okay.
Will all seven middle schools have cross country?
I'm not quite sure. Typically, it's probably going to mirror what's in the high school. So I can use From Where I Came Cummings as an example. Sprinting is a really big deal, so I would imagine middle school track would be really, really huge in the spring, but in the fall, you know, a lot of those kids play football. So I'm not sure if they, I don't know if there would be like fifteen to twenty people on the team, where it might be at Southern or Eastern or maybe at Woodlawn. So, am I anticipating all seven having a team? Yes, we just don't know what those numbers will look like right now.
Do the basketball and football programs, do they generate enough funds at the middle school level?
They have to, because-
To just support themselves, or is there enough money there?
Typically, yeah, typically basketball and football, we are, yeah, we're depending on them to kind of carry the mail for the other sports. With those other sports, we are very lucky if we can break even. We, obviously, we're gonna have to pay for, in some instances, security and then officials, and so that'll eat up a line here of the profits that they have, so that's kind of where we are.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So I think we started off, and they were just competing in middle school within the schools in the district, so now you're asking to compete outside of the-
No, ma'am.
No.
No, 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 just, yeah, just in the district. Yes, ma'am.
Do we know how many students were involved overall?
Typically, I think, on average, there was probably, initially, it's probably about sixty or seventy per school, and as things happen, I think we finished up with about thirty-five or forty per school, so we're looking at about two hundred and eighty to about three hundred kids that had an opportunity to do something.
That's a follow-up to my question. I was speaking to the teacher who emailed us who was advocating for having cross country. Is what she was wanting being addressed?
Yes.
I think she was speaking to her overseeing the running club and how she could easily extrapolate it over into a cross country.
Right, so, yes, sir, so that's basically what we're talking about this evening. They were already doing it, but it just wasn't official offering, and what we are talking about or asking you for is to make that an official offering. With that being said as well, when it was a club activity, the advisor did not receive any compensation. So as a result of making it an official offering, we can provide some compensation for that person as well.
That's why I want to make sure what we were doing was encompassing that request.
Yes, sir.
So, okay, so do you need a motion for that?
Um, I have-
Well, we put it on here as discussion to hear from you, and then we bring it back next week. If you're ready to go ahead and approve it, we'll-
Just one other question. Do these young people that are in this legitimate now athletic thing, do they have to get the same kind of school physical?
Yes, ma'am, they're gonna be required to, there's an attendance component, there's a grade component, and there is the physical piece, and there's a concussion piece. So anybody that we're going, and they were doing that, well, for the most part, they were doing that anyway, but this just gives us coverage and, you know, takes some of that liability away from us. We know that everybody out there has been vetted, and that the folks that are out there, they're gonna be healthy, they're gonna be academically capable, you know, we're gonna make sure that they're coming to school, obviously, and behaving as well, so.
And just one other question. I know for the high school, my daughter, both daughters run track, will all the middle schools be at the same meet at one field? You know what I'm asking?
Yes, ma'am. So basically, it'll mirror what we did with track. We didn't do like three events with all seven middle schools. That would've just been, just a little bit too much. So basically, what we're looking at doing is doing maybe tribe meets, three schools, and then one school, well, two schools would have a head-to-head or a duel. And then we'll come together at the end of the year to make like a county championship, yeah.
And your scheduling was okay with the high schools as far as the locale?
It was, the high schools, the good part, I want to pat them on the back as well. They were very, very willing to work with us, because obviously, it is their future as well. So we were able to kind of work some things out in terms of, you know, getting time for them to practice and obviously getting time for them to do a meet. Cross country is a little different in that you don't have to tie up a specific track, like you can just go run in the woods. That kind of sounds kind of bad to say, but it is, it's really easy to pull off. We don't need to have a track, you know, we can kind of reconfigure around the campus, of course, for them to be able to run, as well as, you know, the transportation piece too, we have that worked out as well, so.
And just one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do our high school coaches make it a really big deal and go speak to the middle schoolers that are running to let them know you're our future? That's a huge deal, you know?
Well, and you know what, I, we have some very passionate coaches. I know you've heard from one, Coach Davis is very passionate about track, but during this process, I've also found that in other schools, there are other coaches just as passionate, and I'm not sure if it's about that. For me, well, I love the wins and losses, but I also love kids, but it's refreshing to be with these coaches, high school and middle, because it's not about the money, and obviously, it's not about the wins and losses. They just want kids to be viable members, that's excited, want to be productive and be active, and so we are, we're really doing something really, really special.
Well, let's go ahead and make a motion so that they can get started.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, because it's gonna be a while before we meet again, and it'd be nice for them to know, going into the new school year, this is gonna be a thing. So, yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, Steve.
Okay, okay. Any further discussion? Then all in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye. Aye opposed. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have File Wave next, and who's gonna handle that? Dr. Boss, are you gonna handle the File Wave that we took off of consent agenda?
I can, I wasn't sure if Mr. Rose meant just a board discussion or-
Yeah, I can handle it.
... actual agreement.
Tony can handle it.
I'll handle it. She may want to answer some questions if somebody has it. So, Dr. Boss, I got your email, the board got your email, and I appreciate you doing that, and I didn't know exactly what you intended insofar as the timing of this, and so I just wanted to get it out and discuss it so that you could get your requested input from staff and teachers with the goal in mind that we would be able to approve this before the school year started, which may require a waiving of second reading. And I know that you shared with me concerns that you did not want us to skip the process for people to share their input.
Yes.
Do you want to speak to that first?
Well, just due to the fact that the policy revision only has a couple lines in it, in the red line version, that you probably haven't had a chance to take a look at yet. However, procedurally, two documents, two agreements will land in procedure as a result of the policy revision. One, that employees will sign when they get their devices, that acknowledges that they understand that there's a way that we track devices, and it's about knowing where our devices are, not about knowing where staff are, but just them acknowledging that they understand that. And secondly, an agreement that any employee who can access confidential student, or any student or employee data, those limited number of people who do that will sign a confidentiality agreement. And I think it's important that if we are going to waive first reading, that our staff, the public, everyone is aware of the changes and why we're making them, and it's handled in a very transparent way. If we are unable to accomplish waiving first reading, getting everything passed, approved prior to August twenty-eighth, we would like to go ahead and move forward with File Wave, but disengage the feature that allows us to track the device. But that would be only if we didn't.
Well, and let me speak to that, because some people may not know what we're talking about, because we discussed it length with this at the work session. So IT staff made a presentation of a product called File Wave that's main focus is to push software out to remote devices and various other IT-related things that benefit the school system. One of the issues that I raised was is that this product also has the ability to track devices. If devices are on people, then potentially, people can be tracked, and that's a privacy issue. So I spoke Monday, a week ago, with Adam, our attorney, and I explained to him at least how I was familiar with this process, and that there were really three things that was needed, is that we needed to have confidentiality agreement that IT administration would sign, that would say that if they used this data, or really any other data, in ways beyond what their job entailed, that there would be disciplinary action up to termination for that type of usage. Number two, there'd be a policy that clearly articulate that. And then number three, that we notify people who have school system devices on the front end of receiving the devices, that that device can be tracked, and that they know that going into the acceptance of using that device. So I appreciate you working on this, because I think you've done that with the policy. And so I just wanted to say that I'm okay approving the contract tonight, but I just wanted to say that my support of approving this was contingent upon us getting these needful things done, so that we can protect the privacy of all of our staff that have technology devices. So how you manage that, I'll leave that to you. If you want to leave it disabled until everything's approved and fine, but I feel comfortable with the movement that's happened with Adam and with what you and your staff have done. So as long as we just keep the cart behind the horse on this, and certainly taking into consideration any input that we may receive from staff.
That's right.
We need to make sure that we clearly articulate that the purpose of this product is not to track, but that there are many other benefits in which it does. So anyway, I think people may be concerned about that. One other caveat that I wanted to make sure, you and I talked privately about this, that I wanted to make sure that the way a device goes from being not tracked to tracked, certainly if it's a school system device and we put software on the device that signs it up, then, and then we tell people, then that's fine, but if there is a way that someone can have their personal device activated, then they need to know that. Like, for example, if they configure their email, their school system email on this particular phone, even if it's a personal phone, if that signs them up for that phone to be tracked in our system, then they need the notification as well.
Agreed.
So, but I appreciate your work on this.
Thank you. I appreciate the board's support of this, and I don't think that I mentioned in the email that Adam has vetted what I attached to your email today.
So when are you looking at this to be approved, like for us to vote on?
I'll bring it to the August boardwork session. My hope was that I would get any feedback from you and go ahead and post it for public comment if the board, if that meets the board's pleasure.
So for clarity, you're asking for a vote on the contract tonight, so that you can move forward with the ones and zeros on the technology.
Yes.
The policy that we're changing is what you're gonna post, get feedback on, bring back in August, and hopefully-
Waive first reading.
We can waive first reading and approve it, so that it's activated for the school year to start.
Right. And I would, my guess is that it wouldn't, it wouldn't lend on consent for the August evening board meeting, but you might want to leave it on the website for public comment another few weeks.
And since we are in between school years, if there's a way we could communicate to staff that this is out there, that would be, I think, a good thing.
That's, be easily done.
That's what I was gonna say. Do we have any means where we can communicate this other than relying on them to look on the website?
Yeah. We can do it in several ways. Have Ms. Faulner send something out, have principals send something out, and having some language around the importance of their really taking a look at this. And then at device deployment time, attend to the issue you raised about what happens when you load an app on your phone, what we can access, and with Gmail, it's different from Outlook, as we discussed.
Okay.
So you need a motion to approve the wage contract?
We're gonna approve the software support contract for File Wave.
Okay. So I make a motion, we approve that contract.
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye opposed. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll see you at the August work session, and you'll do a formal presentation of that change in the policy, and we'll put it on fast track so we can approve it at the August night meeting.
If it meets your approval, yes.
Surely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So next, I think we have Lindsey Chris is, you're presenting the career technical education. And Lindsey, before you start, I fail to recognize Rod Malone over here. He's our board attorney for tonight. Our regular attorney, Adam, is on vacation, at a family reunion out of state, and we've had Rod here before, and Rod does some important work for us when it comes to buildings and property acquisition. So thank you very much for being here.
Happy to be here.
Okay, Lindsey, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Van Pelt, Dr. Harrison, board members and guests. I am Lindsey Chris, a special populations coordinator for CTE in our district, and I'm also the CTE administrative intern this year. Our CTE director is out of state tonight, so I am presenting for her this evening, and I'm here to request signature through consent of the assurances document for our local plan. The assurances being signed means that you, as the board, approves and that we are following the fiscal policy guide that explains we are going to follow all the rules and regulations in spending CTE dollars to support and improve our CTE programs in Alman's Burlington. This evening, I'm going to share some highlights from this past year and some priorities going into two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Some priorities that we have coming up in this next year, we are adding CTEC in facility testing as a testing site for the A-plus credential. We did this a few years ago with the nursing credential, where we added them as a site in order to improve access for our students by allowing more opportunity for our students to test for the A-plus credential. Expose students to career and college opportunities to develop post-secondary plans. Transition has been, transition to post-secondary plans has been a priority this year and into next year. Increase the number of student credentials earned district-wide. I'm gonna talk about the numbers in just a second. Increase Fire Academy course options. We are adding Firefighter Technology III next year at Graham High School, available for all students in the district and high school. And then provide CTE content PD opportunities for teachers. We like to give them teaching opportunities for PD, but as well as things within their content area. Some examples are the Comp TIA certificate that our students would have, or that the teachers would have to teach the A-plus credential. Adobe Academy, we have some teachers going to this summer for additional training. We have some of our health science teachers attending biomed training. And last year, we had a student, I'm sorry, a teacher that needed some more welding experience, so we provided opportunities for him to go and learn more about welding in order to be able to teach our students. Increase the number of CTSO student, I'm sorry, career and technical student organizations for student participants, not only the opportunity to have more CTSOs within our school, but student participation, to increase mentorship, leadership, and scholarship opportunities for our students through organizations such as DECA, FFA. and scholarship opportunities for our students through organizations such as DECA, FFA. And we'll talk about that in just a second. The last one for priority in next year will be expanding marketing of CTE to all stakeholders. So students, parents, the public, as well as folks within our school district, counselors, other teachers, and other folks that would need to know more about CTE. So some highlights from this past year. We have, over the last four years, we've had 10,200 students pass credentials. This could be anything from NurseAid to the Comp TIA to Microsoft Office Specialist certifications. And then this past fall, we had 1,761 credentials passed. We do not have the final numbers for spring, but they will be coming out this week. And so we are increasing at a faster rate with our credentials, so that's allowing our students to become college, or career in college-ready leaving high school. We have some pictures of our SkillsUSA, DECA, FFA, and FCCLA. Those are our career and technical student organizations. All four of those have qualified to complete in the Nationals this year, which is the first time four of them have been able to go, have qualified to be in Nationals. So we're really proud of that. Our Finance Academy at Williams High School is growing, as it has been in each prior year. The middle picture is the ACC cohort following the ABSS schedule on ACC campus. These are actual, this is a picture of our actual graduates in machining program who were able to receive and walk at graduation at ACC prior to receiving their diploma, their high school diploma. So that was really exciting. This year expand, next year, it'll expand into early childhood. I'm sorry, the spring, it expanded into early childhood. So they are offered on ACC's campus, on our schedule, which is very rare in the state. And then our Fire Academy opened this year, in 2016, open to all students in Alamance, Burlington and high school. And it's at Graham High School currently, with courses expanding into 17, which is the Firefighter III. Some more highlights, these were all partnerships that we had with area businesses and organizations. Carpentry program partnered with Alamance Caswell Home Builders for the Playhouse Competition. About approximately 100 business partners, teachers, administrators, parents, and students came for our CTE program partnership meeting to discuss different things going on and improvements in our CTE programs. And that's where the marketing plan came from and improving the marketing plan for next year. CTE was represented at the Burlington Maker Fair this year. We had two teachers go, one with food science and one with, who's from Southern Alamance, which is a new course this year for them. And then we also had a teacher from Ray Street who does Intro to Computer Science. So he represented us as well. 24 teachers were a part of the Tuesday Tours for Teachers in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. Eight students were selected as CAPS summer interns this year with potential to become apprentices for next year. And then the first next stop nursing students will enter ACC in fall 2017. This is a program where students are able to jump the line to get into the nursing program, because the application process says that they have met all the requirements to be, go directly into the nursing program. Which this is really great for our students, because it's saving time and money and courses that they would need to take before they got into the nursing program in the ACC. Some work-based learning opportunities that, these are some highlights. We had the ESL Career and Resource Fair. It moved to October. We generally had it the first week of May, but we figured an earlier timeline would allow for us to have more follow-up with the students and help them with transition and help them more with scheduling of courses and things like that. So we moved it to October. Juniors participate, all juniors are able to participate in job shadowing. And we did have 175 students that were CTE interns and apprentices this year. And then we had, we improved on our one-on-one and small group meetings with CTE seniors to provide more opportunities for transition post-secondary plans. And we held the senior job fair in May to improve our numbers of our kids that transitioned successfully to career college or enlistment. And there's Robin's information. And we did, one of the things that we did with our marketing this year to improve is we've added a Twitter page. So if you can follow @robinbowers_CTE. And that will give updates of everything going on, including summer events, things that we're providing, or even our students that are competing. And there's, we also added a Facebook page this year. That was one of the suggestions that came from our program partnership meeting about that we should add Facebook for, to reach more people. So.
I just wanna, it's not about suggesting, I just wanna say something I think that I would like for us to consider. Couple of years ago, when I was chair, I had mentioned about us possibly going on a local radio show to talk about what we're doing. And also to have, I was at a school board training in Greensboro, and we go up there in the fall. And there was, I think it was Nash County, that they had a student team that did their own little television show, kind of. And they would, student people, kids, would interview like Dr. Boss about all the great things that she's looking at, Dr. Monroe, Dr. Thorpe, the directors. Anybody, you, with all this amazing things. I know we have shout-outs, and I know we have Times News. It's one thing I've learned, when you run an ad in the paper, you're the one that's looking for it. You're the only one, 'cause you paid for it. It's really hit or miss. It's great, but it's also hit or miss. And that's not a put-down, that's just what it is. I just would love to see us really show ourselves in a more visual way. This could be on our website and maybe the counties, because they've got a new community person that's doing a really good job about filming and really, I just think we need to really promote ourselves for all the great things that we're doing. And not everybody reads our website. Not everybody does the shout-outs. I think we're really missing a market that we could really clamp onto to really just show what, how amazing we are. Because we do things that nobody even knows about. 'Cause if you ever listen to certain talk shows in the morning, they're really good about telling us what we should be doing, because, you know, they don't know we're already doing it, but it serves as a way to put us down. And I would just like to put ourselves out there and just let this county and the state know just how amazing our school system is and how over-the-top we are as far as really the cutting edge of education. And I just really wanna plant that seed. We've got great kids that may want to do this for a career as far as television or broadcasting, anything like that. And what a great way for them to get their feet wet on something like that. And I know we've got the equipment, and that could be a great apprenticeship as well. I mean, there are just a lot of things that we could do, because we're already doing them. And I think that would really rally even more support for our school system, because if you're not into everything, you're missing it. And that's just life. People are busy, they work, you know. But I think the more we can put ourselves out there in the most positive way with student leadership. And our directors and assistant superintendents do so many amazing things that nobody knows about. And they're just waiting to hit the big screen, I can tell. But just, you know, just wanna plant that seed. I just think that's something that we need to think about doing.
Thank you.
Lindsay, I'm glad you're here. I wish Robin was here. Because I just wanted to speak to the growth, or not just the growth, but just the complete turnaround of CTE in this program. I mean, I've worked in higher ed for almost two decades. I want everybody to go to college. But I understand everyone is not going to college. And I don't want for those students, for them to be an afterthought in what we're doing to prepare them for life. And when I got on this board, I used to hear so much negativity about the lack of cooperation with the school system. And we wouldn't let the home builder students work, the students work with the home builders. And it was just, the industries were constantly saying how we were not serving them and the students. And I get the complete opposite now. And I've, for board members, if you haven't been to the meeting they have, where they bring in the car dealership folks and people in our local community, and they sit them at the tables based on the industry, and they ask them, what skills do you need? And they're developing these programs and this curriculum around what folks in the industry are needing. And the CAPS program is a great example of partnership and how we're doing that. But I don't know who all was at the, when we went to the Firefighter Academy. You know, it was pouring down rain, the kid was on the ladder with a chainsaw, and I was thinking, oh, I hope we have insurance. And then it hit me, this is exactly the criticism we got before. They said, well, the lawyers won't let you use a hammer and a nail. And I thought, you know, we're really preparing these kids for real-life skills. And these kids are graduating and getting real jobs with real salaries. And I just want our commissioners to hear that, because, I mean, we're getting more tax revenue, because people are getting jobs and spending money. And it's a cyclical effect. And so funding these programs and doing what you guys are doing, and I know Dr. Harrison and Dr. Boss and the leadership has really transformed the, how proud we are and the effort intensity we're putting in this type of work to prepare these young people to do real work. And I just, I can't say enough about it, because, and I agree with Pam as far as marketing to the folks that need to hear it. But there are a lot of people in industry in our community that are doing cartwheels about the relationships they have with the school system and how we are preparing students to come into their businesses. And I just give Robin and Dennis and everybody big kudos, because this is a complete turnaround from what I saw seven years ago. Congratulations.
And the more that the audience sees it, and that's where they get their facts from, the better. Because I know, well, with rezoning, with anything that we've had to accomplish this year, I think the hardest thing we've had to face is the opinion of what it was going to be instead of what it actually is. You know, I would rather somebody not like me based on the facts. Don't do it based on what Tony Rose says, you know. But I'm just saying, I want people to get it from the facts, and then they can have their opinion, because they've earned it. I mean, that's the way it's supposed to be. So just, you know, we're pretty awesome, and we need to let everybody just see how awesome we are.
I've kinda got a long view of this, 'cause I've been around the longest, and don't say anything, Tony. But I can remember when I started in education. And if you were in a, it wasn't called CTE then, it was called vocational education. And it was kind of like, the kids were going to college, they kind of looked down on those kids, for whatever reason, because they were basically in different tracks. And I'm seeing kids now that are taking vocational courses, not vocational, CTE courses that are going to college too. And they're doing it to get the technical in, but also to get those certifications. And I think that's great. I think there's more cross, and you've got a lot of CTE kids that, of course, need those higher-level math. Pam and I went over to Machina Specialties and Wits at, what, it was a couple of years ago, and
Was that the day you got your picture took with Governor McFarland?
It was. And we talked to some of the workers there and watched them build a chassis for a military helicopter. And I asked, I said, how much math do you need? And they said, well, do this job, you need to be pretty good in algebra and have some trigonometry and geometry skills too. But some of those folks over there are making over $100,000 a year. They may be working overtime, but they've got a specific skill, and they're very good at what they do. Some of us were in a restaurant down at the beach the other night, and I'm just changing here. But isn't SafeServe one of the certifications?
Yes, sir.
I saw two SafeServe certificates back behind the cashier. They put them on the wall, so people could see. And probably most people don't know what SafeServe are, but I know they've had training on how to prepare food and serve food in a way that keeps me, as a customer, safe.
And ServeSafe is offered at all of our high schools, as well as CTEC.
Thank you. But y'all are doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
Now, you've got something here that I'm supposed to sign, but I think we gotta vote on it first.
Correct. Yes.
Would you, you wanna talk about that for just a second?
I'll see you at the beginning.
Yeah, that is, that's just saying that you guys approve of our local plan and that we're gonna follow the fiscal policy guide set forth by the state.
I move with the president.
Okay, motion second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. In this case, we'll, well, I've got a blank copy, I ran off, but I'm sure. Have you got a copy of it too? Okay, well, I'll sign it later. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Okay. Custodial contract, Dr. Thorpe.
Yeah, you better hold on to this one.
Did you bring your bulletproof vest?
Yes, ma'am. Wear it every day.
Got the Kevlar on. This is how it's made.
Good evening, Chairman Van Pelt, Board of Ed, Dr. Harrison. I bring, my first item I bring to you today is the extension of the custodial contract for another year. This contract is in its fifth year, which is it'll be its final year before a new RFQ or RFP will go out, which we are anticipating going out in early fall. Part of, one of the change or stipulation we put in this contract is that on July, excuse me, on August 31st, that we would take over Western High School, Western Middle School, AO Elementary, and Eliana Elementary Schools as our own custodial cleaner, or custodial, yeah, custodial support, instead of using the contract. This decision comes because, you know, one, time urgency at this point. Two, we've been with this contractor. And three, we have seen some progress over the last two years, and would hope to continue to see some additional progress.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
'Cause I'm always the one no in this. Okay, when it comes to the cleanliness of a company as far as the people that are at a school that do this for us, who has the right to say, dude, why aren't you dusting this? Why aren't you doing that? Is that the principal's place, or is that Dr. Harrison has to fly down there on a broom, make a scene? Or what is that? Because in turn time, on the eighth grade hall, 'cause I proctored five days this year, my name is rote, Pam Thompson was here, on top of the, we call it the lockers, because it was so dusty. And in the corner, the bathrooms, I don't know if they mop, and all the dirt goes to the corner. I took pictures, I have not put them out there. But I'm just curious, 'cause I'm telling you, that has an effect on a teacher. Your environment has an effect on you. We all know that. It does me, it does all of us. So who gets that note to tell that person to dust the top of those lockers? Who?
Okay, that goes to a lot of different folks. Every administrator in the building's been told, although it's a contract cleaner, they have the authority to direct any custodian to do anything in the cleaning field or anything necessary to the school. Our folks that walk around and check, we have a few that walk around and check, they've been told they have the authority to pull that group and tell them. I do, Dr. Harrison does. You know, any administrator can definitely direct any custodian under the contract to do anything that is reasonable and within their scope of work.
Who owns the equipment and cleaning gear?
Unfortunately, we own the equipment.
We own the equipment?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that was a point in the contract. Dr. Thorpe?
Let me move over.
I don't know how other people are gonna vote on this, but it's not happening for me. I bit my tongue last year. I've just, I've had enough. We've, I've made so many recommendations, and I don't know what to do. I mean, all I can do is vote no. We have some schools that are impeccably clean, and I admire those leaders that are there that are making that happen. I don't know if they can not put a workshop on for other folks. I don't know what we, as a board, can do. But, you know, last year, we were told there was gonna be a security guy that was doing security assessments, that was gonna do cleaning assessments. We were told that the president of this company and his leadership were gonna go through schools and look for things. Because we didn't know last year whether it was our folks or their folks. But I haven't seen any evidence that any of that is happening. It is just absolutely incredible where we are with this. And my comments have no reflection on you personally, because every time I see you, you're sweating like an Arizona plumber, and I know you're working hard to get this working. And one of the things that I've suggested is that the folks who are responsible for overseeing these contract employees should have some type of a reporting structure through you. Because you're managing this contract, and you're working with this company, but you don't have any say over what's going on. And I think over what's, over what's going on. And I think that, that is a, that, that is a problem. So, I, I don't know. I, one of the things I suggested was let's have a ABSS employee and a contract employee at each school. And let the ABSS employee oversee the contract employee. I mean, I, I'm full of ideas, but, but I, I just don't know what else I can do. But these bathrooms in some of these schools are, I mean, they, the homeless shelter looks better than these. We have, we just learned about people giving money, three hundred thousand dollars. These businesses in this community, their bathrooms don't look like this. And, 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 you know, it's just amazing to me when I hear kids say they wait till they get to CTEC to use the restroom or they wait till they get home. And, and I, I know you're doing what you're doing and so I'm not fussing at you. I'm asking, what can we do? I, I keep hearing this is a money issue. But there are low-paid workers cleaning bathrooms all over this county, I mean, that are clean. I mean, I, the Amtrak station bathroom i- is, is, is amazing. And so I just don't know, wh- what do we need to do to motivate people? I was speaking with, um, at one school, I spoke with an assistant principal back in the fall. This school was incredibly dirty the year before and I went there for board lunch and I was expecting to see the same. And this, it was amazing. I couldn't find anywhere to take a picture. And I asked the AP, I said, "Tell me about your contract employees." I, I said, "What's going on here? This is amazing." He said, "We love them. They're part of our family." He said, "If they can't get to work, we go and get them and bring them to work and they're proud." And I, I think this is an issue about the pride of work. And, and where I work, you can ask a custodian what they do and they're grinning ear to ear and they're telling you what building they're working in. And, and, and they, they see the vision. And for some reason, we are not able to articulate the vision that we have to these folks that are cleaning some of our schools. And so I, I'm, I'm just asking, what can we do? Because it seems to me we keep approving this contract and we keep getting the same results.
Is this not an attempt to address at least some of those in the Western High School?
It's a beginning phase to.
Zone? And I know it's not just in the Western Zone. I mean, it, it's, it's throughout. Can you equate to dollar amounts, one versus the other? How much was the original, how much is the Premier contract being reduced by taking out these, how many, five schools? And at what cost now, uh, would we be incurring by, have we looked at that, hiring the janitors and hiring the full-time custodian and, and paying benefits? Are, are we saving any money? Because I was told somewhere, if we had to go out and look for another company like Premier, we're looking at about three million dollars more is the current rate than when we started this contract, like five years ago?
Yeah, at some point, this contract scaled back a little bit. I, I don't know.
Yes.
The original contract was for whatever it was and then we scaled back.
Scale back meaning the employees or the cost?
What happened, Patsy, was hours per school was cut, days that people would work, like right now, most of the contract custodians are on a hundred and eighty days.
Okay.
Whereas a lot of them was on two-twenty originally. So that would be a full twelve-month job at two-twenty, or ten to, you know, eleven, twelve month. That was changed, so a lot of reduction in the force was created in that contract.
Was it based on our budget having to cut back or just?
Honestly, I don't know. I know the, the stories behind it because it was prior to my role here. But a lot of it was told, was told to me has been budget restraints and some was thought we were paying, overpaying for custodial services in general.
Well, I know what Tony was talking about, like pride. That, that goes with everything. I mean, that, you really wear that. And that, you know, that just can't be about the people cleaning our schools. This is not an easy job. It's constant. Little bitty hands love to tear them paper towels up and they're just like they've been in there just throwing them up and down. That's just kids. They get it the older they get. We're not just educating them, we're teaching them skills and life and responsibilities. But that pride has to start at the very top and go through everybody that works in that school. Because if they don't care and you see that, why would a custodian care? It's a hundred percent the entire building, the board, central office. We've all got to care about our schools because you can build a brand-new school and it's beautiful and in a couple of years, it's gonna look like what happened here. Because of the pride and we're so proud of what we do and what we look.
Dr. Thorpe, in an email I sent to you a year ago, I pointed out that section seven of this contract, attachment seven of this contract says that Premier guarantees to perform all duties outlined in the RFP and any duties missed or not performed to the customer's satisfaction will be redone at the expense of Premier Services. How are, how are we enforcing that? I've been asking for lockers to be dusted for about eighteen months, just once. This same QAP says that monthly inspections are done by the area manager of the entire facility. Copies are given to the facility manager and the company owner and any items to be corrected in a timely manner. How, how do we hold this company accountable to those words?
Okay, back to your first part that you read. When something's reported to myself, they do come out and they work afternoons and evenings with no additional hour of the rate to us. So when an administrator reports it, I work directly with Lee or one of his supervisors. They come back and they perform the, the duties.
So bottom line is, it's on the principal at each of the schools to, if they're not satisfied with what's going on in that particular school, is to notify you.
Or their designated correct. Yeah, I was gonna say, or their designated, it could be their designated.
So, so that's the answer to that. So if the lockers haven't been cleaned, then obviously the principal have not felt a need to do so or have not directed someone to do so. But where we are right now, what I'm trying to get a hold to, if we don't approve the extension of this contract with Premier, then we have to find at least two million dollars. So, right? And we don't have two million.
No, we've got this, we have this much money. And if we don't approve this contract, we're out looking for somebody with a limited budget.
Right. Which are we gonna, based on your research, we're not gonna find anyone who can do what it is that we need to do. And I understand what Tony's saying. I'm not happy with them either. But I was looking forward to seeing, um, what impact the changes that we've added by doing this test in the Western Zone to see if the schools and the pride and if hopefully some savings and some dollars and to address the, the bus situation with the dual employment contract with them or whatever it's called. Then that will give us until this time next year, basically. It's either gonna work or staff is gonna come in with the recommendation, hopefully not to extend this. But you've already did some research in terms of trying to find somebody else. Well, you need to do that prior to the budget because we're gonna have to go to those folks and find the additional cost.
Early file, early file, there's two things I'm planning on having together. One, an RFQ and RFP to go out for new custodial services so we know what the market is there. And two, take the same formula I use for the Western Zone, apply it to the rest of the county and say, "Okay, here's your two dollar amounts. Here's, here's what matters. This is what it's gonna cost you if we go with, uh, Patsy's cleaning service."
I might need to stop one.
This is what it's gonna cost you if we go with our ABSS employees. Bottom line, that's the numbers.
Okay, now let's go back and talk to changes that you said that was made to this contract prior to your tenure and your tenure. Have we corrected those and reinstated particularly for twelve months so that somebody's cleaning these schools during the summer? Or are we still on the ten-month with Premier?
Still on the ten-month. We have minimal, we have minimal services during the summer. Uh, when I say minimal services, we have four crews. We have, um, maybe one custodian there. There's a sign there throughout the day. But then another group comes in and helps gets all the floors done and then move to the next.
So basically, all they do is the stripping and the waxing of the floors and then whatever it takes to just keep things going.
Just, and just a little tidying during the summer.
That's without students.
Emptying trash, other office areas, vacuuming areas of importance, those type of things.
So that explains why when schools first start, then
Takes a little while to get it all back together.
It takes some time to get it clean. Schools not necessarily over the summertime because nobody did. I didn't, I didn't know that. How much money are we saving or to change it from a ten-month contract to a twelve-month? How much are we talking about? What would we, we need for people to get into the schools on a twelve-month basis?
If we'd up it, if, okay, with the assumption we kept the same company and we'd up it, it would probably put it back around to two-point-five million mark if we added all the labor hours back. I think the original thing was two-point-three something, so.
Okay, and, um, the, how many employees do we anticipate hiring with this, with this new configuration? And will they be twelve-month or will it be ten-month?
They will be twelve-month.
They will be twelve-month.
And we are looking at about twenty-four folks.
Now, those are people that will be in dual positions.
Yes, you would have, uh, like at AO, there's five folks we're anticipating, excuse me, we're anticipating five folks. Anticipating, uh, four of those folks either driving a morning or afternoon route. So that's two buses basically covered and one person there from six-thirty to three o'clock full-time.
Okay, so that, those folks would be twelve-month positions? And bus drivers only gonna work ten, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you mentioned a moment ago that we have four cleaning crews or summer cleaning crews that are going through, I guess, various buildings that they're assigned to do so many buildings in the summertime. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's not unlike that we, we, we did when I was a principal. What I see, and, and, and this thing about clean versus unclean schools, it, it seems to me that you go in some schools and they're, they're great. And other schools, not so good. So, and I'm sure there's various levels between that. So, we're, we're, we're looking at trying to just do something in the Western District to solve two problems. One is the bus driver situation and hopefully give us some daytime custodians that can address some of these problems.
Well, what this, um, particular program does, it does address some daytime custodians, but also split custodians in your middle school and high school late in evening, late, nine o'clock in evening. Uh, because there's so many events going on in the high school, going on at a, a middle school that, you know, a custodian, one, needs to be available to take care of the events. But two, if you're really gonna clean a bathroom, you know, during the day, you can touch it up, you can do those type of things. But you really need it when there's no kids in there, where you can get a water hose, you can get the chemicals, you can get the scrubbers, you can get in there and do a good thorough scrubbing and it has time to dry before the kids return.
Do we have full-time employees currently at these schools and what if they decide that they didn't wanna drive a bus? What are we gonna do with them?
Well, right now, um, at these schools is the majority of them, but all but one is a contract cleaner from the records that I have on them. The, everybody hired will be hired under those pretenses. If they are custodians or contract custodians, I've already talked with Lee. Nobody's gonna lose their job. He has slots to slip them into either with the school system or with other, uh, organizations he cleans for.
What happened to, when, forgive me, uh, it was a joke, but this is what we called her. When we had the energy czar lady and we got rid of that position. And at that time, we talked about the savings from her position, um, being in some kind of dual role, going around the school, checking on how clean the schools was and what needed to be done. And over, sort of being an overseer to the contractor. What happened to that position and would it not be back in our, based upon what Tony and everybody's saying, would it not be beneficial to have someone in that type of role as opposed to relying on the principals at all the schools?
Well, when she left, I'm not sure that that position ever truly materialized at a hundred percent.
A new position.
The new position. I think, you know, some work fell back on some of the other people that we had to help, tries to help oversee some of the custodial work going on.
That's the problem, I think. There's nobody to, administrators got so many things to do after school. It's football time, it's basketball time. Uh, I tell you, that lady at Ray Street Academy?
She's the best we've got.
Oh, my God. That lady, I love to feed her. I thought she was a full-time employee. She takes pride. Offer the lady the job. Find the money, find that position back and offer the jobs. And I bet you'll see an improvement in our schools because she wouldn't tolerate anything less than people taking pride in the school.
And that's what, that's what it's gonna take.
And that's, and that's the type of people we need in all our schools. And I, I don't think it's fair to Todd to have to manage this company and this contract but not have any oversight responsibility over top of the folks that are seeing what the folks are doing in the schools. And I know they're in there in the evening, I know they need to be, but they're not being managed.
And I, and I need to get under the bus with Todd here. You know, the end of the day, this is my responsibility. We've heard about this, we've talked about this for three years. Everybody wants to blame everyone else and, uh, we, we got the attention of quite a few schools and we've seen some improvement with a couple of folks we've not gotten their attention of and we're working on, on getting their attention. Todd's staff, Todd's staff is probably smaller than any operation staff in any school system that has at least fifteen thousand students in the school system. Angela's staff is smaller than any school system that has fifteen thousand in it. Charles is smaller. And we've not put money into central services positions. And, you know, you can't have so many priorities and we've, um, talked about this. I must not have talked well enough about this. We were looking for a, um, a solution. We, we think we have one. If the bus drivers and the custodians are school employees, then there's no doubt about it that the principal has absolute control. I, I've stood up in front of them, I don't know how many times, and told them that if there's any problem to let Todd know, or actually let, let them know directly. If they didn't work with them, then they'll let Todd know. And if I had to get involved, I'd get involved. Some do that, some don't do that, Tony. Some of our folks evidently don't look at the top of lockers. So they don't know that they're, um, you know, again, blaming doesn't work and making excuses doesn't work. But my sense is, as much as I talk about this with principals, I talk about a lot of other things with principals a lot more. And I think they're paying attention to the things that they hear me speak most frequently about. You know, I would ask that you, uh, approve this. Let us see what we can do with, uh, the Western District. We had, seemed to have had more difficulties with bus drivers in the Western District. And we seem to have had some serious issues with this problem in, uh, the middle school and the high school. Our, our elementary schools do a nice job in, in the Western District. I think AO's in good shape and I think Elon's in, in, in good shape as well. You know, we've had the, um, we've had the same conversation now for, for a number of years. And you guys probably need to get a letter in my file for not getting this straight.
Well, I, I
We'll save it to next year. You be gone then.
Maybe we'll get somebody, we'll get somebody good next year.
I mean, just for clarity, I'm not looking for people to be under the bus or letters in the file. I, I, I just want us to have the same experiences consistently across the schools. And, and like you said, some have gotten it. And I, I don't know what else we can do as a board to help the folks who haven't got it, get it. And so, I mean, the only really thing we can do is sit up here and fuss and not approve contracts.
Well, probably we'll let them come and sit and listen to what Todd has to listen to.
Well, how about, um,
Well, I'd be glad to meet them on Saturday on the school and I can give them a list of things to report.
Um, how about if Patsy and I volunteer to be inspectors? Cause they already about throw up when we walk in anyway. I would so volunteer to do that with white gloves on.
Todd, can I ask you what would happen if we went to, instead of extending this for a year, if we took this to month-to-month? Would that, would that help with the company to get their attention that, that we're serious?
If we go month, that would be my option if someone, you know, if we didn't vote the contract through. Uh, month-to-month, that would just be what direction you want me to head in after that point? Do you want me to move forward? We're trying to get these numbers for you. Do you have money in your budget to find it?
No, we don't.
Or do we just pull these numbers this spring, I mean, this file and make it a top priority, uh, budget issue in February?
We have over three million square feet. We're trying to keep
Three and a half million, yes.
Three and a half million square feet. We're trying to keep clean and upkeep with operational or capital improvements. It's not enough money. We know that. So, um, unfortunately, we have to have this service, whether we like it or not. We gotta keep, we gotta make an attempt. So I think Tony makes very poignant points about the contract and what they are supposed to be doing. And I would encourage you and the principals to really pay attention to that and to get their attention about it. And, um, let's see if we can't make some improvements, at least in the first few months of school. I, I, I mean, we're, I think we're stuck between rock and hard places. We gotta have cleaning services. How many of our employees are actually ABSS? Do you know right off the top of your head?
Shannon, do you know that number right off?
That's okay. But the majority are contracted. But the majority are contracted.
We're down to just a small handful.
Okay.
Well, just, I, you know, to sum it up, we gotta move on. But I think, uh, just let it be known at the schools that, uh, when we are out there, we're, we're, we're looking. The parents are looking, and we don't like this particular contract, but we have no other choice. And you are showing us that we won't be sitting here next year if we, the performance level is to the same degree that it is. And then we'll have some feedback in terms of this test program in the Western Zone. But I don't want anybody to get upset if we go into school and mention that it's dirty. Uh, because we're gonna hold from you all the way down to our principals to ensure that if they see something that is not being maintained, that you know about it, or somebody knows about it in administration. And, and we're not gonna have a blind eye to it anymore. Cause like you say, we've been discussing this too long, too long.
Well, yeah, and, and, uh, you know, I, I kinda, I, I kinda like Tony's idea. I don't agree with one month, but maybe six months? And, and this, will six months give us enough time, Dr. Thorpe, to get a feel for this, uh, what we're, what we're proposing to do at Western, in the Western Zone?
But the only problem, um, Steve, and within six months, uh, if we decide that they were not living up to par, where are we gonna find the money?
Yeah, I know.
To, for a new contractor? That's the only problem.
Well, that's a good point. But what, what I'm thinking about here, you know, I, I, I keep going back to thinking about my friend Cool Hand Luke and Strother Martin, when he says, what we have here is failure to communicate. And it, there, there's a breakdown somewhere in the communication, either to the, to the workers, or to the supervisors of, of the company, or maybe it's even with us, the board not pushing it down hard enough on the people in the schools that, so they understand the importance of keeping the schools clean. And, and, uh, as Pam said, taking a lot of pride in, in that. I'm sure that they, uh, that the company has job descriptions and what the expectations are. Am I correct? I think we're breaking, where it breaks down is when we or someone goes to inspect. And as Dr. Harrison said, uh, it, uh, we, we don't have that person to go around, and we have, have a limited central office staff. And, uh, this General Assembly, I think, in their budget, uh, is cutting central office funds some. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, so how, how can we get to the next step? Which is everybody respecting, respecting the school, trying to keep it clean, and, uh, everybody working as a team to make it happen.
And Steve, just to, just to really add to that, like the six months you're talking about, if that's some kind of type of probationary time for the company and us, because it's not all the company. You know, if you've got some schools that, like Ray Street, you can get off their floors. And we visited Sylvan that time to have lunch out there, spotless, it smelled like the aquatic center. You could tell they were cleaning the bathrooms really seriously. I, I just, you know, getting a person to go around and check adults for a job that they should be doing anyway, that they're being paid to do anyway, I think is, is not smart. And I understand a position, but at the same time, if that principal sees an issue with whatever, they should notice that. And they should feel and have the freedom to really do exactly what Tony said this contract does. And, I mean, it's gonna be on somebody, but in every relationship, there are two sides. It's not one hundred to zero. So, I think if we do a six month, whatever, that's on us too, our staff. Because I guarantee if everybody does just what their job is, you're gonna see a difference and an improvement. Cause I mean, accountability's huge. I know everybody's busy, but cleanliness is top.
Well, I, I just think the communication, some, in some places is broken down.
Exactly.
No, what, what I would like to see, uh, may, maybe we get a report from, from, from your department, either in December or January, of how things are going.
Todd, I'd like to say before we vote, that I hear you about, we need more money to hire a firm that's better than this. And if I'm the president of this company, I'm, I'm mortified to hear one of my customers say that in a public meeting. But somehow, school systems in North Carolina have figured this out. And are they, are they choosing to pay three million instead of a million and a half? Or they picking someone, that, that tells me that they must be prioritizing something else different. I, I don't know, I'd love to talk to Rodney Shotwell, or, or Jim Merrill, or somebody, and find out what are they doing? Are, are they really spending a higher percentage on this? Because something's different in their schools than in our schools, and that's the thing we need to find out. The second thing is, is I wanted to say, another thing this contract states is it says that Premier, that their employees who replace a position vacated by an ABSS employee will make eleven thirty-five an hour. I keep hearing that we're not paying them a seven dollars an hour minimum wage, and that's why they aren't any good. Uh, we're paying this company a lot of money, and if they're underpaying these people, and that's why we can't get good people, then we need to have that addressed. What's his name, Lee? I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like a spreadsheet. Not, not for me, but for you. I'd like to know, is he, is he doing that? I'd love for you to go through this contract, and you can see it in this email I sent a year ago, and, and address each one of these issues. Because I feel like that if we held them accountable to the words that are on the page, a lot of change would happen with what we're already spending.
I think that's a rumor. I know people that, for them that make way more than seven dollars.
Invite him to a board meeting, he can do a presentation, and we'll just ask him.
And lastly, we're taking two votes, one on the contract and one on the Western, uh, pilot program. Is that correct?
Oh, I would.
And so, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for the pilot program in the Western, but, but I wanna say, my vote on that pilot program is contingent upon you, Todd, or someone under your authority managing that from a leadership standpoint. I do not want people in our schools that are currently managing these cleaning people we have doing that program.
Yeah.
It's too much money to give to people who are already demonstrating that they're not managing what we have well. So, I don't know how that works, but this program needs to have every opportunity for success. And that means it needs leadership and oversight to make sure that we are recruiting bus drivers and custodial people that can do these jobs well.
I, I'm confused, Tony, because those people, Premier would be out. How would they be supervising the people under the tests? Uh, you lost me right at the end.
This is their coming year.
I think he means our employees that are in the building administrators.
Oh, you don't want our administrators at the school supervising these full-time employees?
No, I want Todd to have some administrative control over what's happening with these folks. Because it's not working, what's happening, it's not working. And I don't wanna throw another three hundred and eighty thousand dollars at it to try to fix it with a different plan when we have the same effort going towards it.
Is there a way we can find anybody anywhere to get, um, some type of person in your staff to just oversee this entire maintenance thing for all thirty-three of our facilities? I mean, that seems like a full-time job in itself there. Um, I mean, somebody out in the public, please, we need to find this position. You know, it just seems like we need somebody else to, to oversee it. And I don't know how we could do it.
I bet if you put a website up and sent the link to the teachers, you'd get plenty.
Can we move any money from, um, um, school board budget? And make it a, um, turn it into a position?
We'll look and see what can do.
Can you do it? Cause I think that's the issue. I mean, with any contract, you can get out a contract if they don't perform up to the level of contract, at least we could try, right? So, I'm not really buying this six months, one month, or anything like that. Because what we're still gonna be confronted with is a year from now, or prior to the budget time, is are we gonna be looking for someone other than Premier? And if so, one way or the other, even if the tests at Western work, we're gonna be looking at a substantial amount of money that we have no control of, that we're going to need to address janitorial contract, whether they be our employees or whether they be a contract employee. So, I mean, if we can try to find somebody to oversee it, I think that would be the best thing. If I couldn't volunteer.
We'll volunteer.
So, anyway, I, I, I make a motion that, uh, we accept the one-year renewal contract, uh, with Premier Partners. Um, do you want it in separate motions?
Yeah.
Um, uh, as outlined, um, in the contract that's presented to us.
Okay, I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor of Patsy's motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Ayes have it for two. Okay, the second motion would be, uh, the allocation of...
Um, I make a motion that, um, this board enter into an agreement, um, to test the pilot program in the Western Zone for custodial contracts slash bus drivers for a period of one year with the, with the recommendation from staff for the future.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion second, further, further discussion.
Just one question, Dr. Harrison, if this thing at Western Pilot is just really awesome, and it goes over great, and we decide that will go school-wide, somebody's gonna need to win the lottery, right?
It'll be, it'll be about the same cost as it would to get what we need for, uh, for the, for the
Our premier custodial services. Plus, we're gonna solve the bus drivers, and some of the, some of the salary will come out of transportation money, so, um...
I think big picture wise, we're probably gonna very similar dollars.
And just one question, if we've had a hard time with bus drivers, are we pretty confident that all of these cleaning crews at all these schools are gonna jump on this? Like, oh, yes, the best thing I've ever heard of.
I think we're pretty confident for one zone, for sure. Now, when we expand it, it might be a little bit more difficult. But the part of the problem with bus drivers are the, the peculiar work schedule, that you work in the morning and don't do anything in the middle of the day, work in the afternoon. The salary we've increased the last couple of years, but there aren't any benefits. So now you'll have a, you'll work eight straight hours, you'll have a decent salary, and you'll have benefits. So, I think will be much more attractive.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, let's take a vote. Um, all in favor of Patsy's motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, Dr. Thorpe, you're, uh, you got your work cut out for you.
Yes, sir. I've got one additional, uh, really two additional contracts. These are from lottery money that was approved early on. It's just now to get the construction contract so we can begin to work. Uh, we got Carolina Courts at Southern High. That's the track, it's one forty-nine, five fifty. We got mechanical contractors, this is the broad view to repair, or to replace the stucco and stuff that's had to be taken down. It's a hundred and thirty-one, nineteen.
Say it again, it said broad view to do what?
The stucco that's on the side of the building that's falling off. Yeah, it's, it's a nightmare.
It, it, it was touching, it's touching the ground, right?
Got some in the ground, some in the, in the air, because in those years, they used a styrofoam base, and it's just over time deteriorated.
Is this?
Now, the, the part up at, I rode by Broadview today, and now there's, there's some at the bottom and there's some at the top. And what are we gonna do with the, at, at the bottom, what are you replacing with?
We're actually using a brick veneer.
So what are you gonna do up at the top?
It'll have to be a stucco, just based upon the design.
Okay, okay.
And are we going after certain people that put in a bad roof?
We, uh, actually, our board attorney and myself and a few of us is gonna spend all day winging together, walking some roofs and, along with the attorney firm, with the warranty company, and determining what we need to do, and some things are gonna have to happen more immediately than others.
Right. Okay, but in terms of priority, for those facilities that are having some roof issues, issues that are not covered under warranty, would the stucco, uh, situation have a higher priority than a leaking roof in the school?
Well, the, the six roofs that we have the majority of issues with, it's all the same company.
Oh, amazing.
We have six, we have six roofs. The ones that we have constant issues with, the other ones, I went back and pulled some, just some data for myself. Like, if we had one at Sylvan, we repaired it, we hadn't heard another leak from Sylvan this year. So that tells you that was just one of those leaks that happened. Now, at South Meven, where we had to replace that back building that had a shingled roof on it with metal, that one, we had continuously problems with, but we've come up with a solution for that one because it wasn't under warranty and the shingles had, the warranty on the shingles had expired.
Lewis, what's Eastern? Eastern, and I get mostly from Eastern and
Cummings.
And Cummings.
Cummings, uh, Broadview, Cummings, Cummings Final Art, Grand Middle are top four, priority-wise, because they are all on with the same roof. Ian Holt and Sylvan, excuse me, Ian Holt and Sellers Gun has, um, two small areas that use the same roofing material that's not as high priority because we're not having the same issues with those right at the moment, but they will be grouped into this whole agreement of how we're gonna settle this. Eastern, the problem we have was with a flashing company, uh, that comes out and puts the metal. They came back, they did the repairs, no charge to the school system, and took care of the issues that we're having there. So, we're hoping that we've resolved the issues there.
Do we look like we're gonna have to have a whole new roof on anything? Or are we just band-aiding quote-unquote the issues?
The roof that's under warranty, uh, I've spoken with a roofing contractor, had him go out and do some assessments himself. Three of the roofs are more than likely, in his opinion, to the point that we're gonna have to do some major repairs, including replacement. Uh, three of the roofs, he feels like can be coated with a, with a product that Sherman Williams makes. Uh, what, it's a spray-on product. Sherman Williams guarantees you a ten-year, gives you a ten-year warranty with the product, which would take those other roofs past the life of the warranty.
Um, speaking of Sherman Williams, paint, do you have any kind of ideas about Cummings?
Yes, ma'am. We've met with both groups. Uh, right now, what we're gonna do is resolve the roof leak issue, so that doesn't play as a factor in the repairs that's gonna be made. And then the painting will be repaired. It's just, it's just we got the, we gotta fix the roof first. That's the sort of backwards, try to fix paint, and you got a leaking roof.
Yeah, I don't want kids wearing inner tubes. It's class, so...
But Mr. Chair, if I can get the approval of these two contracts, so we can
Okay, do I hear, do I hear a motion that we accept these two contracts?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, more to do. Next is the ACC Board of Trustees' appointment. Uh, there were four letters submitted. One from Dr. Rosalind Crisp, who is, who's currently, um, ending, um, her four-year term appointment with us, and she's asked to be reappointed. Uh, Thomas Powell the Fourth, Dr. Charles Scott, and Jake Cook.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we appoint Dr. Rosalind Crisp to that position.
My second.
Yeah, motion second.
Just like to make sure that we have appropriate feedback to all the candidates, that, um, they were all very qualified, and we would be honored to appoint them, it's just, we have one appointment, and encourage them to apply next year, or to apply with the commissioners, um, who also get the point of seat. And, uh, you know, Dr. Crisp is doing a great job, and so we wanna let her continue to serve. But, um, that doesn't mean that the other folks weren't equally, uh,
Yeah, I
desirable.
I, I, I think all, all of these candidates are highly qualified.
Who, who does that, who, who sends them a letter?
Your officer.
Marie, okay, all right, yeah. Please let them know, we, we appreciate them taking the time, and, uh, wish we had more spots.
Yep.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, Dr. Crisp is appointed for the next four years to ACC Board. Next is the superintendent search discussion.
Rezoni.
Oh, I'm sorry, pardon me. Yes, rezoning the new subdivisions. We've got a couple subdivisions, uh, in the Southern Zone that back up to the Graham Zone. Lacy Ridge, which, um, Ms. Ellington Graves spoke to us about in, in comments, and the Forks at Alamance, which is, uh, on Rogers Road, about the place, Lacy Holt Road comes in, and, uh, it, it, it also backs up. Lacy Ridge, I think, is, uh, a hundred and one house, or a hundred and one lots, potential there for lots of houses. And the Forks, you said, what, eight or ten?
No, I'm like, I'm ten.
Lacy Ri, I'm sorry, Lacy Ridge, I'm sorry, I got them backwards. Okay, but Lacy Ridge is ten. Okay. And, uh, since we put this up on the agenda, I've learned that, uh, there's another area that I don't think has been marked off yet, but the Old Quarry Hills Golf Course. Uh, we need to, I think that we need to keep that on the radar, cause it also backs up to the Graham Zone. I think what we were I think what we were talking about here is to take the high school students that live in those two subdivisions, once they get built, and see that they would go to Graham High School. I think Ms. Ellington Graves made a good point when she said that some of those students that are in Lacy Ridge or will be in Lacy Ridge are already going to, already in the Southern Zone and going to Southern High School. So, but we've got a problem at Southern. I think we all know that with 1,500 students there, and it's built for, what, 1,000 students in the core area for even less, we've got to make some adjustments.
Steve, since we've learned with Lacy Ridge, we're only talking about 10 units, and we're not adding any to the Southern with that, could we remove Lacy Ridge from this and add Quarry Hills? And that way, we're doing only the undeveloped areas?
Sure.
In the larger areas, and then we're not, we're not... Because I don't, with this, I don't wanna disrupt students that are already at schools.
But we don't know that, and we got another thing that we can address that. We can change it to what we're proposing, and just have them to come in and ask for continuation like they currently do, by showing their domicile as to where they're living and how many, and consider it on a case-by-case basis at that point.
I think what we could do here, you know, as far as this, I think we had to think about cost detectiveness, too. You know, we're gonna be running, have to run a bus either way, so maybe we won't have to run a bus as far. The students that are from the Lacy Ridge area, I think, would be E.M. Holt, Southern Middle, and currently Southern High School. And how many houses are there already that are ready to be occupied? Okay, so we're only, we only have one at this point. And Forks of Alamance, I think, has one under construction. So we've got, well, we've got some time. If nothing else, we've got a little bit of time on our hands. But I just feel, I feel pretty strongly, at least take Forks of Alamance and say, the students there are gonna go to Graham High School, but they're gonna have to go to Southern Middle. And I'm not sure that side of Rogers Road probably might be Alexander Wilson.
Why would they go to Southern Middle?
If you go to high school in the zone, and they have room at South Graham, and they have room at Graham Middle, why wouldn't they, everything be Graham, until we get the new high school?
Yeah, well, we can do that. I mean, we've not really had this conversation about where... I was just thinking high school, because the other two schools, all the other schools are under capacity that are in the Southern District.
I'd hate to be going to one middle school and then have to flip to high school.
I mean, what's the middle?
Southern Middle.
Southern Middle?
Southern Middle's slightly under capacity.
Except the 95 percentile amount that we uses. What's the Forks of Alamance, that's that new one?
That's the one on Rogers Road, there at the top of the hill where Lacy Holt comes in, on the left.
Okay.
Okay.
And the one, wait a minute, the one at the golf course, they just, that hasn't even started.
No.
Now, the one on Rogers Road across from the park, there's some houses there. Now, they already got the stakes. Now, that is far, further ahead than the...
Are you talking in the wooded, are you talking about the wooded area between Rogers Road and Wildwood?
So we don't run through the woods?
That's in my neighborhood.
It's in between, yeah, two houses, and it'll be, yeah, that area. They have already staked it out, and it was...
But they haven't pushed any trees over.
Oh, they're getting ready to, very soon. It's further along than the Quarry Hills. I thought the Quarry Hills was just in negotiations.
That area, that area's already in the Graham.
There you go.
Okay, so Sandy, do you have something that, I mean, I don't know if it's allowed, but can I speak?
So as a real estate agent, and I'm speaking for all of my colleagues, families buy for school districts, and we have to know what tells people. And I have three families that I have told it's Southern High School District, and their kids are in Southern High School. And I need to know before, because I can be held liable for that. So I need to know what we're doing. And I don't think that the impact that Lacy Ridge is gonna have on Southern High School is minimal at all, because these kids are in Southern High School.
I can support this, we pull Lacy Ridge out, and I can even add the Quarry Hills to it that's undeveloped.
And I can't, because it's about the overall picture. And that's, we were the ones who brought it up and said, it would be very unfair for realtors to sell property, thinking that it was another zone, and then we change it. And that's why we need to address it early. If, in fact, those three families that you're already under contract with, they fall under the provision, whatever realtors are who might sell it, they, we easily already have something in place to address that. If they come in and show proof of that, they, in fact, can be grandfathered in. Now, the other new seven families, that's a different thing. If we tell them now, it's gonna be another school zone, that's what it is. Now, of course, realtors have the argument, people buy houses in the school zone in which they wanna go, but that's why we in the pickle we're in right now, is because that's the case, and certain zones are getting overcrowded as a result of people wanting to go quote-unquote "good" school versus "bad" school. But this is down to a matter of space. And I think if you start making exceptions when we have rules already in place to address this situation, we're not getting ahead, we're just backing up again.
Well, these three families are, they're already Southern, and they can stay Southern.
Yes.
Correct, so they don't really have anything to worry about.
But when they close on this property, it's gonna be after...
But we have provisions already, that happens all the time. When kids are in a school district, and say, if they move to another school district, they can remain there. They can say, yeah.
Is that a guarantee? I have to give them a guarantee. They're spending $200,000, $2,000,000.
Well, when you say guarantee, I don't know if continuations that many, where we deny that the children that, right? But can I tell you, it's absolutely guarantee? No. But if it had to come down between guaranteeing three families versus addressing overcrowded, then I'm sorry, the three families would lose, because we got to look at the bigger picture. I'm saying, I think we can accommodate these three families, but I can't put that in writing, I mean...
Well, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning for the Forks of Alamance and for the Quarry Hills, and not for Lacy Ridge.
And that's the undeveloped part of Quarry Hills.
That's correct.
Because the Quarry Hills that's on George Basin Road and slightly off on the north side, where the building will be, there are a lot of houses, they're older houses.
I'm speaking of the undeveloped areas, to be transitioned into Graham Zone until the new high school's built.
Yeah, why don't we just make a general statement then, that all new subdivisions, because they popping up everywhere off of 54 as well, until the new high school is built, instead of trying to chase all of these, and the realtors would know that any new development in the area that is considered Southern High School that is off Highway 54 and/or Rogers Road or 49 would be at Graham High School, something of that nature.
I'll amend my motion to include that.
But I'm not excluding, I mean, well, I can vote against that.
How far to the south on 54, because you, 54 goes all the way to the county line.
Well, I would say at least to Alexander Wilson.
Okay, that's, I think that's reasonable, to 119.
So you're not gonna do, it's just 10, there's no, like, pastures around, some little man's waiting to settle?
There is, there's a lot of land back there.
Oh, loads of land.
We personally in Lacy Ridge, we require 19 acres, and should be 16, specifically because it was in the Southern School District. We have 19 acres, that's all we have.
There we go again.
We have six lots approved, and we have four pending approval. We don't have on our land left. There are, there is more land back there for sale with different landowners that has not been sold, has not been transferred. And it's unfair to punish developers and builders who acquire land because of where it's geographically located, and they get in the middle of construction, in the middle of development, and then you're gonna switch gears on them.
And but...
And also, and board members, we're talking about this as a temporary fix, that this is just until we can get a new high school to take the pressure off of Eastern and Southern.
So let me see if I can...
Then it would revert back to the lines that we adopted in January.
Let me see if I can clarify my motion, okay?
Okay, surely.
All right, so my motion is that we rezone the undeveloped areas of the Forks of Alamance and the Quarry Golf Course area that's currently undeveloped or not started building, from Southern to Graham, until the new high school's built. And that would be to the exclusion of Lacy Ridge in my motion. And that we would also, as Ms. Simpson said, we will include along 54 down to 119, any area that is not currently purchased or under development that became a decision to purchase and develop, would be zoned in the Graham Zone until the new high school's built as well. Okay, that's my motion.
Before the second, I'm gonna make this comment again. That other subdivision off of Rogers Road is currently in some phase of development. Unfortunate, they didn't send anybody, very fortunate that Ms. Ellington, is it Brown? It's Graves, I'm sorry, is here to talk about the 10 lots where she is. I still believe it is unfair to exclude Lacy Ridge, once again, when we already have provisions. Those other seven home, I understand the three that has already bought.
They're waiting, Patsy, and something Simpson, they have not balled, they are waiting.
Well, waiting to hear this, but if they're already there, but the other seven that, we don't know who they may be, might be me, I think they should be able to go to Graham. It's no different than that big subdivision that has already started. I mean, when they put the sign up, people thought that was Southern. It's gonna now change to Graham, based on this motion. So what is the difference between these three families versus those 100? Nothing. Nothing.
I...
Now, I mean, I appreciate you being here, and you're doing a good job as a realtor, but I'm trying to get the big picture. We have a procedure in place to address those. When you start making a difference, it appears to be favoritism, again. Not to say that they're asking you, I don't mean anything personal, but you got to look at the big picture, you can't just look at those three families. We can take care of them, look at the big picture, it's about space. And there is no difference. The only difference between that subdivision and the other one we're talking about is we have a representative who's here being proactive and requesting it. The other one, if they're not here this week, they'll be here for the next one, when they find out.
I'll include them in the motion there, too.
You haven't given me, I'm asking you, you haven't given me any justification in looking at the big picture, as to why we should accept your motion.
Can I ask one question?
I think what Tony was looking at is maybe the larger, two larger tracts of land, Lacy Ridge and, not Lacy Ridge, Forks and Quarry Hills would have a greater impact, because there're gonna be more units built out.
When you're overcrowded, even as we do transfers or anything, five extra, three, whatever, it does make, in fact, make a difference. So, I mean, you can't just say, just because it's 10 lots.
Will the kids in Lacy Ridge eventually be in the new high school zone?
That's what I wanted to know.
They'll be in the Southern High School Zone.
So...
They're currently in Southern, what we're considering is moving them to Graham. And then when we get the, then when we fulfill the rest of the redistricting plan, then they would go to...
The new high school.
No, they go to Southern, because we're pulling kids from the eastern side of the Southern Zone into the new high school.
Guys, don't, you talked about cart and horse a while ago, you don't have a new high school, and you don't have a bond. And please don't assume that we're going to get a new high school. We've done, seen that with a budget hearing, that we didn't get what we thought we were going to either, that was crucially important. So I'm not gonna dare say, when we get the new high school, that's what that'll be. When it's got the foundation poured, then that's different, because you just never know with that.
But Pam, that goes even more to what I'm saying. Because if we don't get it, and we have to rezone, more than likely, Lacy Holt, all of it's going to Graham.
Okay, Ms. Simpson, Ms. Simpson.
Okay.
So let me clarify. Okay, you asked me for a reason, so I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you a reason. I think that with the two larger areas, the Quarry Hills and the other areas, they're large areas, they're undeveloped, nobody's buying houses. This Lacy Ridge area seems to be a small area, where there's already houses that are committed to. We heard that they're already in the Southern Zone, the rest of the people are elderly people who don't have it, and so I'm not for splitting neighborhoods. You asked me for a reason, I'm giving you a reason, okay? I don't wanna split the neighborhoods, it's a smaller area. Let's deal with the large undeveloped areas, let's leave people alone that are already involved in what they're doing. So I understand you disagree, motion's on the floor.
It does, so we have a second, so we're still discussing. You talk about splitting neighborhoods, we just split a neighborhood, don't forget. And you were the one who proposed it, we split the whole road. And all I'm saying is, look at the future, Tony. That's all I'm saying, is look at the future. When you start picking out a certain group, and a small group, then that's where we enter into the problem. I just wish we could stick with the big picture of what we wanted to do. And that's why it's fair for everybody. It would be so much easier to justify to people who come and say, well, we decided that because of the overcrowding, all new families, all new housing will go to X school, versus saying, oh, there was 10 families, it was this and that. That's when you start getting into trouble, and people question the integrity of what you're doing. And we discussed this before, that's why, this is not the first time this been on the agenda.
Ms. Simpson, a disagreement is not a lack of integrity.
Well, Tony, why are you second person?
Every time we had this discussion, you start talking about...
Tony, I'm not talking, I'm not trying to offend you in any way. I'm just saying, look at the big picture.
I'm looking at the big picture.
Okay, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
I don't think we do. I'll second the motion.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Mr. Rose's motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have a 3-3 vote.
I just, just, we just can't, we are not the emotional part, and the other side is, and we can't get in part of the emotional part, like transfers, oh, they're horrible. But just because something is undeveloped, we can't vote on that, because it's safe when something else is in the process. You know, these three kids are at Southern, if I was on that board, I would say stay. I mean, that's common sense, but we do have to look at the big picture. I understand both sides, I really do, but we don't have a high school yet, so...
Okay, we've had a 3-3 vote, so we really don't have either one. We could take it subdivision at a time, or we could let it lay on the table till August.
Just lay it on the table.
Because Brown will be here.
If we do have provisions, let them know.
Okay.
I can't, you heard, they just said, um, Patsy, I mean...
Then, I guess they'll put, it'll be a sales sign in the yard then, for somebody else. I mean, it is what it is, unfortunate.
Okay, we'll leave it on the table till August, and that will give us time to hear more community input on this.
Like board meeting or work session?
It'll be work session. Yeah, we'll put it on work session.
And can we vote on it at work session, if we all seven of us, and we go for it then, so it's earlier?
I'm not gonna be at August work session, I just need to let y'all know, since we've changed the date.
Okay.
You got phone, where you gonna be?
Okay. Next is superintendent search discussion. I think we've got two decisions here that we need to make. One is whether we do it ourselves, or we use one of the two companies. That would be, I think that's the first decision, then if we decide to go with one of the two companies, then which one? So I'm gonna speak first on this one, and on the first issue, which, whether to do it ourselves or use one of the companies. The more I thought about it after the last meeting, I felt pretty strongly that we could do it ourselves, and I got to thinking about what my friend in Craven County was saying about it, and there's one big difference. And the big difference is that every one of their five board members had been through a superintendent search before. We've got four board members that haven't been through a search here. And I think it's incumbent upon the integrity of, that the board keep its integrity in this process. And I'm not saying that anyone would... And I'm not saying that anyone would not be, would not try their best, but I, I, I think there's just so much work and so many small minute details that we don't know about as board members, as, that every board member here doesn't know about that I would, I, I, I'm not feeling comfortable and with, with that idea any longer. You might say, do I get, have I gotten cold feet? Yeah, somewhat with this. So, that's kind of the way I feel about it. So, let me hear from others.
Want to make a motion? I make a motion to, we use BWP and Associates for the superintendent search.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, I, I feel a little awkward with the conversation right now because I'm not philosophically opposed to using an organization in the event that we need an organization. But I'm not convinced we are at that point yet because, you know, I mean, I don't know how I can say it without saying it. You know, we're in the middle of a conversation that we've been having in closed session and without completing that conversation, how can we make this decision? So, it would, it would be better to have this on the agenda after our closed session so we would know the conclusion of that conversation, so we would know whether we need to do this. So, I, I can't vote one way or the other on it until I understand what our existing conversation concludes.
We could move, we, we could take the motion and delay it and change the agenda and vote on it after we vote on human resources, after item M.
Rod, can we do that?
You could make a motion to table it until M2 or something. Yes, absolutely.
No, I, I mean, I, I don't mind voting on the concept of using a firm or not. But I think we need to finish the conversation we got on, that we started at the last work session before we can do that.
Well, I, I've, I don't think, okay, when I was chair, we started the search and we got just a little bit in it and then we found Dr. Harrison. So, that's as much experience I've got. I am not comfortable myself to find the next superintendent on our own. I think there's seven of us that have all kind of different career obligations, busy family, everything like that. And I, I don't know but a couple of superintendents. And I said in the work session, I don't want us to get the person we're comfortable with, that we know, and miss the guy or woman out in some other state. I think there are some things that you can cut out as far as that, I've always said that we could get rid of our board lunches and eat before we come. We're all adults and save money on that aspect. But this is one area that we have got to nail it down at the most. It's one of the most important things we do. And I just think this is where a real professional company or whatever you want to call it comes in, especially when it comes to confidentiality. When I saw an article in the newspaper about Dr. Wirt the other week, that made me just panic for his board. Because if Dr. Harrison wasn't leaving and we know he is and he was our superintendent and his picture, an article was read up about Caswell County, I would just be like sick at my stomach. I don't like to cause other boards any kind of stress. Their job is hard enough as it is and question the faculty. I, I just don't want to be responsible for that. And I just, I just think this is one thing that we need to do right. And I know it's going to cost money, but some things have to cost money because they're that important. And I wouldn't want to miss a candidate that's not even in this state because we go with the safe bet based on somebody that we already know. I mean, there's wonderful people out there. I just want the opportunity to get, to hear about many of them.
Let, let, let's deal with this. Let, let's, let's move this to after, after we come out of closed session. And, and, and I think, I think we can finish the conversation, but that does require confidential, confidential information about specific people.
Well, just to let it be known that this, this is not customary to do what we're doing because it wasn't part of the agenda, just so that we won't get in the habit. I'll agree to do it this time. But to have a motion and a second on the floor and then just create another after closed session, put another, I, I don't understand that.
Take a vote.
I mean, a motion to table would trump the existing motion. So, you could, you could make a motion to table and move it to, and to move it and to place it back on the agenda after M. I mean, it's certainly allowed within Robert's rules. I can't say that whether you as a board have done it or not, but it's certainly not things within Robert's rules that prevent you from making a motion to table it and to move it until M2 or, or then or whatever.
I would think that the person who made the motion a second, it would have to make the motion to table.
No.
I move with table, I move with table to M2. I make a motion with table to M2.
Yeah, we have a motion to table to M2 to have a second. I'll second it. All of those in favor of tabling the motion, let it be done by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have two nays and-
Barbie and Skip.
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll table it till we come out of closed session. So, Allison, you have a motion for us.
I make a motion. We enter closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 to preserve attorney-client privilege and 143-318.11A6 to consider confidential personnel protected under, excuse me, personnel information protected under General Statute 115C-319 and 115C-321.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? We're back in open session. Ms. Madron, do you have something for us?
Yes, sir. I have two items. The first item that we present to you is the Personnel Report and staff request your approval at this time.
Okay, do I hear a motion? We accept the Personnel Report.
Make a motion. We accept the Personnel Report as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, let it be done by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, next.
Okay, next I present to you four administrative appointment recommendations. Those include Jerry Jackson as Assistant Principal at Turrentine Middle School, Scott Lewis, Principal of Pleasant Grove Elementary School, Dean Richardson, Director of Teacher Recruitment and Induction, and Jason Slagel, Assistant Principal at Broadview Middle School.
Do you hear your motion to accept the administrative report?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-1. Is anything else?
No, sir, that's-
Okay, we have a, we're coming back to item K, Superintendent Search Discussion. It was tabled. Tony had a motion and it was seconded by myself. No, Patsy had a motion and I seconded. Okay, the motion was to hire BWP as, as the search firm for our superintendent search. Do you hear any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, have 5-1 in favor. So, BWP, I will contact them tomorrow or the next day. I'm not sure if I can do it tomorrow, but I'll contact them within the next couple of days and let them know. Is there any other business? I, I don't know. That's it. Do you hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion. We adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.